And all those who are present in the chamber and watching online this morning. I would like to declare the meeting open at nine thirty seven a m on Wednesday the seventeenth of July twenty twenty four. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the Kandamooka people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I would also like to pay respects to their elders past, present, and extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians who are present today. Firstly, I would like to remind you all that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being live streamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to the chamber as it does in state and federal parliamentarians, and you are reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you may make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking, and for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors to your left and down the stairwell exiting onto Bloomfield Street. All members of the public present at the meeting must: A) Not without the prior approval of the chairperson make any audio or video recording or take any photographs. B) Remain quiet and not disturb the meeting in any way. C) Not bring into the meeting any signed placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present. D) Be suitably dressed. And E) Turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may include future meetings. So I have not been advised of any leaves of absence today, we're all present. I would now like to remind councillors to sign the attendance sheet for today's general meeting, which can be found in diligent boards. This must be completed before the meeting concludes. So, moving to agenda item number three, which is our devotional segment. I'd like to invite Pastor Grant Cunningham of Champions Church to lead council in a brief devotional segment.
Thank you very much for having me today. Can I firstly thank the mayor, councilmen and women, support staff and staff members of Redlands City Council for representing our city so well. You know, today I've come just for a couple of moments to talk to us around honour. Honour in the Bible typically has a communal and even a public meaning. In other words, honour is something that is recognised and bestowed upon us by the community. Honour is more than just actions or more than just words, it's actions. The way we treat each other, the way we help each other, and the way we act towards each other make a massive difference in our community. The Bible says in one Peter, chapter two, verse seventeen: 'Honour all people, love brotherhood, fear God, and honour the King.' I want to just share with you today a couple of quick thoughts on how we can honour each other. Firstly, I want to say honour yourself. This may seem a little foreign to all of us, but sometimes when we work in positions like we work in, we ourselves, serving others and serving the community, we forget about us. The greatest you that you can bring to our city is men and women that honour themselves. Can I ask us, when was the last day you had off? When was the last day you had holidays? When was the last day that you took time out of your diary to spend with your family? We live in a 24/7 environment, and I know that each one of you are contacted 24/7 all the time from people in our community that need your help. But I want to remind us that we have people that live under our roof that need our help too, sons and daughters, husbands and wives, brothers and sisters, and loved ones. I know it's hard to find time for self in an environment where we serve people, but it's important that we have enough energy to make the right decisions for Redlands Coast. I want to encourage us, this is one of the things I struggle with the most. I've been serving in community aspects for over twenty years now in community organisations, and this is the one thing that I've always struggled with, is trying to find time for self. But I want to encourage us today, honour yourself. The second thing is honour each other. Honour each other, in Australia, this is one of the things I believe that we all can work upon. Honour each other doesn't mean that I'm going to agree with everything that you say. Honouring each other doesn't mean that we're not going to have arguments from time to time, but I want to encourage us, honour each other. Today, you may not agree with my belief system, but is it worth throwing it out? Is it worth throwing it out and saying, hey, I don't believe in that? Or around a difference of opinion or belief system? In our organisation, we say this, you know, this year we will feed around thirty thousand people through our community arm at Champions Church, and I'm so grateful that we get that opportunity each year, and we have many people that come to our site that may not have the same belief system as us, but we honour them. And I always tell our people, honour the people that follow us, honour the people that work alongside of us, and honour the people that we follow. And the last thing that I want to say is honour the person and the people that have put us here. I believe that each one of us have been placed in this city, in this council, and in these roles to help and serve our community. I want to encourage us today, honour the person and the people that have placed us here. I believe that each person is God-appointed and people-appointed to the roles that we serve in. As a Christian, I'm reminded of this opportunity daily, that I get to serve our community, and I'm not just talking about my church community, but I'm talking about Redlands Coast, that I get this opportunity every single day to serve our community. I honour God for that opportunity, and I honour the people that have put me in that position, and I remember to honour the role. Today, I honour you for the role that you play in our city. I honour you for the position that you hold in our city. I thank you and I honour you for representing our city, our people, and I thank you for your continued support to our city, your gifts, your passions and your talents. And I honour you that each day you lay down your life to serve the people of Redlands Coast. Can I pray for you today? Heavenly Father, I thank you right now for every single councillor and women, support staff, every person in these chambers today, Lord God, everyone watching online, I pray your Holy Spirit would be upon their life, that you would guide them and lead them, and I just pray for comfort upon their life, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. And I'm now aware that we have two condolences today, and we have some councillors who wish to speak on that behalf. So councillor Bishop, if perhaps you would like to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I would like to speak on behalf of many groups across our community. For a man who did serve his community with honour, councillor Baglari and I would like to speak about the passing of a great local hero, Mr John Bruce Simpson, or Simmo, as he was known to so many. He was an extraordinary man. Actually, he would likely prefer that I say he was an ordinary man who always put in extra effort, yet it was this quality that made him extraordinary. Born twelfth of July nineteen fifty-seven and raised in Kedron, Simmo was a lover of sport all his life. He was a high achiever in many areas, he joined the Bank of New South Wales in nineteen seventy-five, worked throughout Queensland, served as a manager in Vanuatu in the early nineties, and then worked in corporate bank branches in Cooperroo, Winham, Cleveland, and then back in Brisbane CBD, where he became one of Westpac's top five lenders due to his customer focus and dedication. In nineteen ninety-five, he met Gail, the love of his life, at a dream world function during an office Christmas party, and from that moment, John Simpson's life took on new meaning and direction. Gail was a member of the Winham Redlands Canoe Club, and the couple began a life of
And all those who are present in the chamber and watching online this morning. I would like to declare the meeting open at nine thirty seven a m on Wednesday, the seventeenth of July twenty twenty four. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the Kwanda Mooka people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I'd also like to pay respects to their elders, past, present, and extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians who are present today. Firstly, I would like to remind you all that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video, as well as being live streamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to the chamber, as it does in state and federal parliamentarians. And you are reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you may make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking. And for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually, to please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors to your left and down the stairwell exiting onto Bloomfield Street. All members of the public present at the meeting must: A, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio or video recording or take any photographs. B, remain quiet and not disturb the meeting in any way. C, not bring into the meeting any signed placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present. D, be suitably dressed. And E, turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may include future meetings. So I have not been advised of any leaves of absence today, we're all present. And I would now like to remind councillors to sign the attendance sheet for today's general meeting, which can be found in diligent boards. This must be completed before the meeting concludes. So moving to agenda item number three, which is our devotional segment. I'd like to invite Pastor Grant Cunningham of Champions Church to lead council in a brief devotional segment.
Thank you very much for having me today. Can I firstly thank the mayor, councilmen and women, support staff and staff members of Redland City Council for representing our city so well? You know, today I've come just for a couple of moments to talk to us around honour. Honour in the Bible typically has a communal and even a public meaning. In other words, honour is something that is recognised and bestowed upon us by the community. Honour is more than just actions or more than just words, it's actions. The way we treat each other, the way we help each other and the way we act towards each other make a massive difference in our community. The Bible says in one Peter, chapter two, verse seventeen, honour all people, love brotherhood, fear God, and honour the King. I want to just share with you today a couple of quick thoughts on how we can honour each other. Firstly, I want to say honour yourself. This may seem a little foreign to all of us, but sometimes when we work in positions like we work in, we ourselves, serving others and serving the community, we forget about us. The greatest you that you can bring to our city is men and women that honour themselves. Can I ask us, when was the last day you had off? When was the last day you had holidays? When was the last day that you took time out of your diary to spend with your family? We live in a twenty-four-seven environment, and I know that each one of you are contacted twenty-four-seven all the time from people in our community that need your help. But I want to remind us that we have people that live under our roof that need our help too. Sons and daughters, husbands and wives, brothers and sisters and loved ones. I know it's hard to find time for self in an environment where we serve people, but it's important that we have enough energy to make the right decisions for Redlands Coast. I want to encourage us, this is one of the things I struggle with the most. I've been serving in community aspects for over twenty years now in community organisations. And this is the one thing that I've always struggled with, is trying to find time for self. But I want to encourage us today, honour yourself. The second thing is honour each other. Honour each other. In Australia, this is one of the things I believe that we all can work upon. Honour each other doesn't mean that I'm going to agree with everything that you say. Honouring each other doesn't mean that we're not going to have arguments from time to time. But I want to encourage us, honour each other. Today, you may not agree with my belief system, but is it worth throwing it out? Is it worth throwing it out and saying, hey, I don't believe in that? Or around a difference of opinion or belief system? In our organisation, we say this. You know, this year we will feed around thirty thousand people through our community arm at Champions Church. And I'm so grateful that we get that opportunity each year. And we have many people that come to our site that may not have the same belief system as us, but we honour them. And I always tell our people, honour the people that follow us, honour the people that work alongside of us, and honour the people that we follow. And the last thing that I want to say is honour the person and the people that have put us here. I believe that each one of us have been placed in this city, in this council, and in these roles to help and serve our community. I want to encourage us today, honour the person and the people that have placed us here. I believe that each person is God-appointed and people-appointed to the roles that we serve in. As a Christian, I'm reminded of this opportunity daily, that I get to serve our community, and I'm not just talking about my church community, but I'm talking about Redlands Coast, that I get this opportunity every single day to serve our community. I honour God for that opportunity, and I honour the people that have put me in that position. And I remember to honour the role. Today, I honour you for the role that you play in our city. I honour you for the position that you hold in our city. I thank you and I honour you for representing our city, our people. And I thank you for your continued support to our city, your gifts, your passions and your talents. And I honour you that each day you lay down your life to serve the people of Redlands Coast. Can I pray for you today? Heavenly Father, I thank you right now for every single councilman and woman, support staff, every person in these chambers today, Lord God. Everyone watching online, I pray your Holy Spirit would be upon their life, that you would guide them and lead them. And I just pray for comfort upon their life, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. And I'm now aware that we have two condolences today, and we have some councillors who wish to speak on that behalf. So councillor Bishop, if perhaps you would like to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I would like to speak on behalf of many groups across our community. For a man who did serve his community with honour, councillor Baglari and I would like to speak about the passing of a great local hero, Mr John Bruce Simpson, or Simmo, as he was known to so many. He was an extraordinary man. Actually, he would likely prefer that I say he was an ordinary man who always put in extra effort. Yet it was this quality that made him extraordinary. Born twelfth of July nineteen fifty-seven and raised in Kedron, Simmo was a lover of sport all his life. He was a high achiever in many areas, who joined the Bank of New South Wales in nineteen seventy-five, worked throughout Queensland, served as a manager in Vanuatu in the early nineties, and then worked in corporate bank branches in Cooperroo, Winham, Cleveland, and then back in Brisbane CBD, where he became one of Westpac's top five lenders due to his customer focus and dedication. In nineteen ninety-five, he met Gail, the love of his life, at a Dream World function during an office Christmas party. And from that moment, John Simpson's life took on new meaning and direction. Gail was a member of the Winham Redlands Canoe Club, and the couple began a life of adventure, travel, social engagement that quickly had John volunteering as race coordinator, organiser. Eventually, he became Commodore of the close-knit paddling community, many of whom have remained lifelong friends. John and Gail brought two delightful children into the world, Rebecca and Tim, who adored their father. The family all learned to love the education and discovery of travel across the world, community and family friendship that became John's entire focus after early retirement and dedication to the service of all three, family, friends and community, after he noticed that the banking world was changing in the early two thousands. The family lived, and that's when he retired. The family lived in Wellington Point for almost thirty years. John's devotion to our community was truly inspiring and profound. He did so much for so many, and yet his diverse areas of significant work and its impact seemed so effortless because he gave everything to volunteer service, thanks to some of those wise investment choices made earlier in his career. His funeral was held recently at the district, Cleveland District State High School, where hundreds of people came on the second of July to remember a man who was devoted to so many causes, such as youth advocacy and fundraising at the school. Councillor Baglari will speak on other aspects of his involvement, but I'll speak as patron of Winham Redlands Canoe Club, where he and Gail, who was also a Commodore and is still actively involved, have been driving forces that have done so much for the world of paddling, aquatic adventure sports and more. John was also a great ambassador for men's health, mental health and camaraderie. Simmo joined the circle of men and became a facilitator and president in support of older men living in aged care centres. And he helped them to bring pride, joy and connection to these folk. He was also the current president of the Burke Dale Men's Shed for quite a few years. They were a group of fellas who preferred banjos to band saws. Simmo helped fund and provided music books for their band of performers. They'd often join the Dukes of Uke to sing in aged care centres, at community gatherings and during the Men's Shed's weekly meet-ups and fortnightly picnics at the Aquatic Paradise Park. They used to meet at Redlands Sporting Centre and Club, and they've now recently removed to Muddies. For all this and more, he was awarded Redlands City Community Champion of the Year in twenty twenty by Redlands City. And he was, he served as a passionate member for Redlands Olympic Legacy Working Group. John was a friend and mentor to many, including myself, but mostly to his family, who was suddenly affected by his loss after complications due to double knee surgery replacement, knee replacement surgery on the twelfth of June this year. His daughter Rebecca spoke of her father's extraordinary sense of community. If anyone needed a hand, dad would be up first, wherever they were, she said. Tim said that dad was the embodiment of kindness and generosity. The family remember riding elephants in Malaysia, seeing the Mona Lisa in Paris, but Rebecca said it was the joy of having him walk her down the aisle at her wedding just a few months ago that she will cherish forever. John always encouraged people to connect, engage and step up, to do that bit extra in the community. Condolences to Gail, family and so many friends of this extraordinary man. And I now throw the chair hand over to councillor Baglari to say a few other things about his commitment to the city, its people and his spirit of public service.
Thank you very much, councillor Bishop. Councillor Baglari?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge John. Because like many in Redlands, I was very fortunate to have John in my life. I can't even remember how we met because our paths just keep being interwoven for so many years. And I'm sure anyone who knew John would agree, his legacy was one of selfless service. One charity he supported years ago was the Redlands Cancer Branch. They used to hold Relay for Life, it was their largest fundraiser every year. And around two thousand and fifteen, when we were looking for a president, I just happened to mention it to John. And of course, in typical John style, he stood up, threw himself into the organising and driving of the charity work that he did with so many other events. He wasn't only president for that year, but for the following year up until Covid came. And with his skill set, he brought the team together. And everybody who got to know John at the Relay for Life realised he had a larger-than-life personality, his generosity of time and dedication to the outcomes and assisting everybody in all the teams as well as the committee. His volunteering skills were second to none. John humbly received various recognitions along his way. And in two thousand and seventeen, John was recognised as the Redland Inspiring Senior due to his community work. John was also heavily involved in Rotary, and I believe he joined Rotary when in Vanuatu with the Westpac Bank. On returning, he became a member of one of the Brisbane Clubs and eventually joined Cleveland in nineteen ninety-eight, where he remained until two thousand and twenty-two. John's contribution to the community of Redlands City through his volunteering was immense. And through Rotary, he helped youth, which was one of his passions, through the Rotary Youth Exchange Programme and the Rotary Peace Fellow Programme. Therefore, John was felt throughout many parts of the world, being a host parent, organiser, mentor, councillor and friend to many involved in those programmes. Luckily for Wellington Point Rotary, he joined us in two thousand and twenty-two, where he continued to drive local projects. And once again, he connected our club to youth through the Cleveland District High School. And again, he became a mentor to many people at the school. And I know many at the high school are missing John's contribution and John as John. John was very passionate about mental things, and as Paul mentioned, one of them was mental health. And when I was being involved in a ride for the Black Dog Institute in two thousand and nineteen, I did the same trick and mentioned it to John. In true John character, John became heavily involved in the organising and ensured the ride was a success, including entertaining everyone at night time with his ukulele playing and making sure we were all well-fed, because they actually towed the Cleveland Rotary Trailer Barbecue throughout Queensland to feed us all. And I'm going to mention his singing with a bit of a laugh, because his ukulele playing was definitely better. And we had a great night joining in a sing-song. And he continued to support this institute up until recently. John simply loved people and had such an enormous heart and a drive to assist all others. He was inclusive, non-judgmental, and his contribution to our community and many other areas is simply immeasurable. And as Paul said, our thoughts and prayers are with his family, because whoever was touched by John is sorely missing him.
Thank you very much, councillor Baglari. I would also like to acknowledge John Bruce Simpson on behalf of the council, who passed away, as we've heard, on the eleventh of June twenty twenty-four. I'd also like to provide some extra information. John was an avid Olympic enthusiast since the nineteen sixty-eight Mexico Games. He had a forty-year professional career in banking, as councillor Bishop outlined, in retail international and commercial sectors. John was an active community member and had lived in the Redlands for more than twenty-five years. He volunteered with Lions International for eighteen years and Rotary Club Cleveland for thirty-eight. He was also a life member of the Winham Redlands Canoe Club, as we've heard. John was an active and invaluable member of the Redlands Coast Adventure Sports Precinct Industry Stakeholder Reference Group from two thousand and nineteen until he passed away. John was appointed to the Redlands Coast Legacy Working Group in twenty twenty-two, and the group was formed to help the city capitalise on this once-in-a-generation opportunity presented by Brisbane twenty thirty-two. And being a venue host to ensure that Brisbane twenty thirty-two delivers lasting legacies for the city. His appointment reflected his interest areas of community sport and active recreational recreation passion for asset-based community development. Beyond John's role in council's Olympic Legacy Working Group, he was a strong supporter of the Burke Dale Community Precinct, providing support and a voice for the youth of the Redlands paddling community on the opportunities such a venue would bring to the sport of paddling in Redlands and Queensland. Thank you very much, everyone. We'd now like to move on to our agenda item number four, which is recognition of achievement. Would any councillors, firstly, before I move into some special acknowledges, like to present a recognition of achievement? So I am very pleased to recognise that today we have three King's Birthday Honours recipients present with us in chambers. We have Mr Kevin Hughes, Mrs Merrill Overton and Miss Elizabeth Taylor, who is not present currently, I don't think. So I have some wonderful words to outline in relation to each of these amazing people. So firstly, I will acknowledge Elizabeth Betty Taylor. She was named a member of the Order of Australian AM in the General Division for Significant Service to the Community through Domestic Violence Initiatives and Organisations. Betty is the co-founder and chief executive officer of Red Rose Foundation, a national not-for-profit charity formed in two thousand and sixteen that works to address the damaging impacts of domestic violence in our communities. She was a founding member of the Domestic Violence Death Review Action Group Queensland in two thousand and four and was a member for eleven years. She has also been a committee member of the Australian Institute of Strangulation Prevention since two thousand and eighteen and is a past chair of the Queensland Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Council. She co-founded the Gold Coast Domestic Violence Integrated Response in nineteen ninety-six, was founding manager of the Gold Coast Domestic Violence Prevention Centre for thirteen years from nineteen ninety-two, and has been a board member of the Gold Coast Centre Against Sexual Violence since two thousand and sixteen. Betty has been a long-time supporter of council's Dinner on Rouge events, which have raised funds for local, domestic and family violence services on Redlands Coast. She has also been involved in council's candle lighting vigil and was a speaker at this year's event. So perhaps we could have a round of applause for Betty, even though she isn't present at the moment. Secondly, I would like to outline the achievements of Mr Kevin Hughes, who's present today. Kevin received a Medal of the Order of Australia, an OAM, in the General Division for Service to the Community through a range of organisations. Kevin has been a Queensland Fire and Emergency Services volunteer on and off since nineteen eighty-five and has volunteered to help fight bushfires in South Australia in two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. He has also volunteered in the State Emergency Services for about twenty years and is currently a member of the Macleay Island Rural Fire Brigade. He is a former Royal Australian Air Force pilot and has been a veteran advocate and volunteer for the Department of Veteran Affairs for eighteen years. He is also a community ambassador for Bravery Trust, a national military charity that provides financial aid, financial education and financial counselling. Kevin is an ambassador for both White Ribbon Australia and the Australia and New Zealand Mental Health Association, and is a community presenter for Black Dog Institute as well. He is also a passionate advocate for Australian wildlife and in two thousand and eighteen founded Endangered Species Supporters Australia to raise awareness of Australian native species heading towards extinction. And Redlands City Council recognised Kevin with the Environment and Sustainability Award at the twenty twenty-four Redlands Coast Australia Day Awards. Thank you for being present. Merrill Ev Overton received a Medal of the Order of Australia, an OAM, in the General Division for Service to Youth Through Scouts. Merrill has dedicated most of her adult life to helping young people through scouting. She has been volunteering with Burke Dale Scout Groups since nineteen sixty-nine, an amazing fifty-five years. During that time, she has been a scout, a cub scout leader, assistant cub scout leader, joey scout leader, group leader and assistant group leader. She's also been involved with scouts at the district level. She was an inaugural member and volunteer with Redlands Review, was district cub scout leader for seven years and has been Redlands District Activity Leader since twenty twenty. She was a member of Brisbane Gang Show for thirty-six years, volunteered at thirteen Australian Scout Jamborees and is a former area leader for scouts Queensland South area. Merrill and Rob Overton Park, where Burke Dale Scout Group is based, was named in honour of Merrill and her husband. Betty, Merrill and Kevin are all very worthy recipients of these honours. And on behalf of Redlands City Council, I'd like to congratulate them and thank them for everything they have done for the community, both for Redlands Coast and beyond. Thank you very much, Merrill as well. Thank you, everyone. I'd also like to move on to mention our Olympians, who are going to be representing our community in about two weeks' time. So I wanted to give special mention to a Redlands resident, Reece Holder, who will be representing, sorry, Ethan Ewing, who will be representing our area for surfing in the Olympics. And we also have a number of other athletes who will be competing, who have a connection to Redlands as well. There's Reece Holder for four hundred metres, Isaac Kennedy for cycling BMX, Casile Rousseau for diving and Shaina Jack for swimming. So I just wanted to pay a special tribute to them as they embark on what will be a very competitive process. And just say how proud we are as our local government area to have such a number of people who have come from Redlands or connected to our area. And also acknowledge those people who will be involved in other activities as well, in officiating and refereeing and other capacities as well. So I think it's a wonderful achievement for our area and they will do us proud, no doubt. So we move on to agenda item number five, which is confirmation, sorry, receipt and confirmation of minutes. May I have a mover and a seconder for five point one? That the minutes of the general meeting held on the nineteenth of June twenty twenty-four be confirmed? Moved by councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Baglari. Are there any comments in relation to the correctness of the minutes? No. So I put the vote, those in favour, carried unanimously. We have a second lot of minutes, and that is the minutes for the special budget meeting held on the twenty-seventh of June twenty twenty-four. May I have a mover and a second of the minutes of the special budget meeting held on that date be confirmed? Moved by councillor Baglari, seconded by councillor Bishop. Are there any comments in relation to correctness of the minutes? No. I put the motion, those in favour, carried. Councillor Rendles, just an indication from you, carried unanimously. Agenda item number six, which is declaration prescribed conflict of interests and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their responsibility in relation to a councillor's prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest at a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. This means any prescribed or declarable conflict of interests relating to an item be discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting so that this can be achieved. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting. Does anyone need to raise a conflict of interest? Councillor Hewlett.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two to declare, declarable conflicts of interest. First one is I councillor Lance James Hewlett declare that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item fifteen point one in the general meeting on the seventeenth of July twenty twenty-four. Due to an interested party within the report, Soot Gold Proprietary Limited were a past sponsor of the Redlands Community Charity Breakfast, which was organised by my wife Sheena Hewlett. Do you want me to do them both at the same time or?
I will do one at a time.
Okay, so just gonna say that. Sorry, just give me a second.
May I have a mover and seconder that councillor Hewlett?
So I've got to finish it, sorry. My apologies. I have considered my position and firmly of the opinion that I can participate in the discussion and vote on the matter in the public interest.
Thank you. May I have a mover and seconder for the motion? The motion is highlighted so that councillor Hewlett may participate in future, all future statutory meetings. Councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Bishop. Those in favour? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
With the exception of councillor Hewlett who can't vote. Councillor Hewlett, would you like to move into the second?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I councillor Lance James Hewlett declare I have a declarable conflict of interest in item twenty point one at the general meeting on the seventeenth of July twenty twenty-four. Because of an interested party, who I won't name, but it is typed on the report because it's confidential, in this report was a sponsor of the Redlands Community Charity Breakfast, which was organised by my wife Sheena Hewlett. I've considered my position and firmly believe of the opinion that I can participate in the discussion and vote on the matter in the public interest.
Mover and seconder councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Colley. Those in favour? Carried unanimously with the exception of councillor Hewlett, who is unable to participate. We now move to agenda item number seven, which is matters outstanding from the previous general meeting. This acting CEO will now give an update on the matters outstanding from previous general meetings. Thank you, acting CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. There are four items that are outstanding from previous general meetings. There is a notice of motion from councillor Julie Talty, deputy mayor, for a report on council's programmes relating to the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act at seven point one. A report will come to a future meeting of council. At item seven point two, the draft Burke Dale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report, and a report will come to a future meeting of council. Item seven point three was a mayoral minute relating to expenses, reimbursement and provision of facilities for councillors policy. A meeting, a report will come to a future meeting of council. And the last item, item seven point four, notice of motion from the deputy mayor councillor Julie Talty, the naming of Trailhead, that will come to a future meeting of council.
Thank you, acting CEO. So we're now moving to, oh, sorry, councillor Talty.
Sorry, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to ask a question of the CEO about the matter at hand. I note on seven point one that in two days it will be twelve months since council approved that motion, and I would like to know what progress has been made, as we've heard nothing. And I think twelve months should be more than enough time to prepare a report that's authorised by council. So yes, seven point one, it's been a year. Can we have some comment on that, please?
Acting CEO.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, deputy mayor, for the question. You may recall when this matter was brought to council, it was highlighted that there is a significant amount of work that is required to look into this matter over a number of years, and there have been some, not only resourcing issues, but also some skillsets that we needed in terms of spatial analysis, data analysis that we've been working through. There will be a report coming to council, and I'll take your comment that you'd like to see it sooner. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you. We now move to agenda item number eight, which is a mayoral minute. We'll bring that up on the screen. Thank you. So I will speak to... So I'll speak to this motion to give everyone clarity of intent. So we have some agenda items around state election advocacy pieces, and as we know, a multi-sports complex is featured for a long time in various degrees of discussion throughout council. So the intent of this is to raise the possibility of a platform where simply bringing a report back to council that brings it in line with other points of discussion. So, for example, the policy platform that we're taking to state level for our state election advocacy pieces. This will give it equivalent opportunity, I guess, for discussion, and will also, in relation to the looming state election and the timing around that, raise the profile of discussion to provide all councillors with knowledge around the possibility of such a venue, so that we have more information before us, which can be considered as part of a bigger picture. So the intent is just to bring a report back for us to have a look at and provide us with information around the provision of a multi-sports complex in reference. So you'll see that I've received some information prior to coming into council, so you will have a paper copy, but in reference or in light of the information that I received earlier, we've truncated that and we're making it very simply to request a report from the CEO back to council for the potential development of a sporting facility, a multi-sports complex, with the option of securing state and federal funding. And that's the motion that I intend to move. Councillor Boglari.
Just a question. It's number one, to request the chief if he could prepare a report to council on the potential for developing such a facility, but it doesn't say what type of...
Could we include the wording multi-sports complex in that line? So bearing in mind that we have a number of sporting issues at the moment, so we have a major project in our pipeline with Heinemann Road, we have other sporting planning currently taking place to update pre-existing reporting that was done a number of years ago. This then puts the possibility of such a facility in line with viewing all of that together. Councillor Hughes.
With regard to that first line, and you're asking for a report back to council, is that for a council general meeting or for a councillor briefing?
Councillor briefing, so that we all have...
So it's not coming back to a general meeting, it's just for a briefing note?
For a briefing so that we all have information on the possibility of that. So I think it's very important, given the community feedback that we've had around demand, that we start to investigate this and we put it on the table in the framework that we're creating. Rather than a piecemeal approach, we're bringing it all into one.
Thank you for that clarity on that. I understood that that was already being investigated. Is that not correct? Can an officer, through this acting CEO, please? Excuse me, Louise. It's my understanding that we've already got officers working on this. Could you clarify, please?
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Through the mayor, I'll refer the question to the general manager of infrastructure operations, Dr Nicole Davis.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. We always are on the lookout for multi-sporting facilities, and I'd be more than happy to bring back another briefing particularly for the new councillors, as the previous council will understand that we did have a look at multi-sporting facilities, and it is somewhat linked to Heinemann Road and the relocation and the Tetris that then ensues from the movement of people on that facility. But we're also talking to other developments that would remain confidential at this time. So yes, we are working on it, but I think bringing back a report or a briefing to council is very appropriate.
Thank you. The other question I've got, Mayor, obviously this dropped into all our inboxes nine seventeen this morning, and walking in to pick this up, my question is why the urgency that we haven't discussed this as a council previous to this? Of literally driving in, running around, minding general meeting and looking at amendments to a mayoral minute that we haven't previously discussed?
So with all due respect, we actually, this has come up in our councillor meetings before.
Certainly has, but I didn't, I'm just speaking for myself, that I didn't realise that we were getting a mayoral minute now. So I'm asking the question, why are we getting it without notice? Thank you.
So this is a generalised motion to get it on record that we're looking at a multi-sports complex within the framework of all the other work that we're doing. We've discussed it in workshops before, and so it's just formalising that, that we are discussing it. Community knows that we're discussing it, there's a lot of feedback on it, and given that we're coming up to a state election, it's also a topical issue. So yeah, so it makes it a public statement that we are looking at it and we're getting information back so that all councillors can have that information, and we have discussed it before.
Sorry, I had my microphone off, so...
Councillor Hewlett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to comment that some time ago I mentioned to officers, I was approached by the YMCA at Victoria Point about opening another multi-sports facility within the Redlands at Heinemann Road. At the time, I referred it to the COSAM officers, none of which work here anymore, but you've now got that officer who approached, that person approached me working within council who has an incredible amount of knowledge about sporting facilities and the contacts with the YMCA. So I think that would be a prime type person to talk to about it.
Thank you, councillor Hewlett.
Thank you, Mayor. I too share the concerns. I received a little bit earlier, like three, four minutes before I went into the proceeding function. You noted that the purpose of bringing it today is to put on record, but you also noted that these discussions are proceeding in the community. We've identified it a number of times in the course of it. We have regular mayor and councillor meetings where this has also been touched upon. We routinely ask council to prepare reports to bring to general meetings. Later on in this meeting, we'll be looking at changes to the standing orders, which requires any other motion to council at the moment to have sort of eight days noticed, and that's looking at being extended. I think it, I find that when, I don't understand, other than you're wanting to put it on record, where's the urgency in this when we could have had a report called at any other time and raised it in meeting?
I will comment that in the standing orders, there's an option to raise a mayoral minute, and I have. As I said already, that we are, thank you, under six point, six point nine of the standing orders. So as I said before, we've raised this issue. This formalises our discussions within our workshops, and as I said, it's a fairly easy approach. It formalises the record, it puts it on the same standing as it does with our advocacy pieces, given the state election is coming up. Councillor Bishop.
Yes, thank you, for all the reasons that we've mentioned, that it has been discussed. It is a topic of interest in the community. I think it is important, particularly because it is referred to in one of the items that we have for the state election advocacy, or is it local government association motions? But in terms of advocacy going forward, I do understand the merit of actually having a mayoral minute to ask council to pull together what are the substantive requirements. I think rather than, I'm happy to just go with this and see what comes back, but the potential for developing, I mean, I think what we really need to do is investigate, where is this best located? How is it going to best serve the various sporting codes? I think we need a broad analysis that actually looks at the best fit for this city and also looks at all the collaborative partners, and before we get down into who's going to be deciding, and I think we need to look at what is needed and how we do it best. And before we advocate for it, I think that having this mayoral minute just helps galvanise that, that we will have information that comes to us so that that advocacy can be informed by council process. So I think I support that.
Yeah, so the intent, as I said, is to formalise it, we get something back and we can consider it more wholesomely. Of course, this isn't intended to be a holus bolus thing, but it does put it on the table for discussion. Okay, so I take that as a speaker for, are there any speakers against? Councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. We did raise the issues of state advocacy pieces in our workshops, and I'm surprised that this wasn't raised then, that, you know, we should be advocating for that so that that motion could then be changed. I have some concerns about the broad brush statements that are in this, including extensive engagement with a range of sporting clubs across the city has indicated there is a strong demand. We've not received an engagement report back to council, so I'm not sure who has done that engagement piece. An efficient way of meeting this need would be a single shared complex. Efficiency is also financial efficiency as well. I mean, there's certainly a lot of halls and sporting spaces around the city that could be utilised. That is not going to cost ratepayers money. I mean, there's, how many schools have we got across the city that have got a hall? And I think the wording should be, whether there is actually a need, considering the state is going to be building an indoor sports complex on fifteen minutes either side of the city of us. They're building a large one at Chandler for the Olympics, and they're building another one at Logan for the Olympics. So this is kind of, the wording of this is saying there is definitely a need, and this is the best way to address that, is a single multipurpose, multi-sports complex facility, whereas that may not actually be the case. And...
So the motion is to request for the CEO to prepare a briefing. That's the motion.
No, I don't support, don't support it. The work's already been done by council officers, this is just posturing.
No, I disagree. So are there any other speakers for? So any other speakers for? Councillor Boglari.
I'll speak for it, and I'm actually glad it's actually being discussed in a general meeting rather than a workshop, where we have discussed the needs of sporting groups for, well, I've been in here since two thousand and eight, and we're still discussing exactly the same needs, and we still haven't advanced on Heinemann, unfortunately. Recently, it was just mentioned in the workshop where we spoke about advocacy to the state that this wasn't mentioned. It actually was. I mentioned that I was very concerned that the advocacy piece which we're putting up is too narrow, and it was mainly related to state-owned land with schools and everything, and that I actually mentioned that in here, that, you know, when are we going to do this? So I'm glad it's, in general, it's public, because all my sporting clubs actually ask me about the, when are we going to have an indoor stadium here? And I do believe that the Olympic Committee is still trying to get indoor stadiums across South East Queensland. So if we get an open discussion, if we get an open discussion, just remember that honour to others, if we do get an open discussion, if we do get a open discussion going on this, I'm sure our sporting groups will also come in behind us and maybe increase their advocacy, and we can work collaboratively together with the state, and we might get an outcome. It'd be pretty awesome if we did.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes, Mayor, while I absolutely respect your right to bring a mayoral minute, that's one way to go about business, but I can't support this in its current form. I think it jumps to conclusions, it's leading, and it's not really the open discussion that has already been underway with officers, councillors, including councillor Colley and I have been working with officers recently, and we have a meeting next week, actually. So that would have come to light if there had been an open discussion with your councillor colleagues with this. So I can't support it in its current form. So I can't support it in its current form, and I request that it be withdrawn so we can all work on this and bring it back together, respecting the right that you are the mayor and you can bring anything you wish. But I think this can be done better. The state election's been mentioned a few times. There is not going to be a well-written, appropriate report come back in time for state election. That's that's now. And we already had advocacy within the the item coming up, the state advocacy. So with great respect, there is not a single person in this room that doesn't want to see improved sporting facilities, including indoor, but I just can't support this in its current form. So.
So, speaker four. All right, thank you. Question?
Thanks, Mayor. So I, I actually do suggest that we have some type of a plan around this, okay? And I I respect the intent of what you're trying to achieve with this piece of information today. Where I get concerned, though, is these mayoral minutes, if we use the Whitewater facility as an example, tend to be the stepping stone for something that's set in concrete, and that's what gives me a bit of concern. If I reflect back on a mayoral minute in the past, which was, we're going to have a mayoral minute so we can have a seat at the table, so we can talk about the infrastructure required for the area, just in case we get picked for an Olympic site, and here we are today, and that's where I I want to be a little bit careful.
Can I just ask, which mayoral minute are you referring to? Is that, that's one, in a previous term?
Under Mayor Williams. And that's, this is where I get a little bit concerned about mayoral minutes when they come very quickly like this because, as Councillor Mitchell and everyone's already alluded to, I think we do need an indoor stadium. There is, there is basketball that has spoken to me, and I have spoken with the stadium P, Kim Richards, about this as well. So I'm very supportive of it. I just don't like how we're sort of starting that stepping stone approach. These things generally end up being set in stone, and then we've got sort of like budget implications, and it tends to get momentum and roll on, and next thing you know, we've got Burkdale with a Whitewater.
Thank you, Councillor Colley.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I can see what you mean, but this is a request for a briefing. So we have, so a request for a briefing, and I I take on point, Councillor Mitchell's point that discussions have been had, but that's good to know now with Councillor Colley that you're doing something too. So that's good to know as well. So it's about starting to bring that information together. So I will, given that it's a request for a briefing, brought back. I've outlined the intent to bring it to a platform equivalent to the other things that are currently being discussed and provide councillors with equal and relevant information to add to our knowledge base, to inform any future decisions and further reporting that would be required on this topic. So I'll now put the motion so we can move on. I can, I can, in my, in my role as chairperson, I I know we've got a heavy agenda today. This is, this is, this is a motion that's bringing a briefing back to council. I think we've probably prosecuted enough. So I'll put the motion. If you don't want to move ahead, it's entirely up to you. So I'll now put the motion. Those in favour of requesting to prepare a briefing, a briefing to be prepared and brought back to council? Those in favour? That's Councillor Boglary, Councillor Golly, Councillor Hewlett, Councillor Bishop and myself, and those against having a briefing prepared in relation to this topic for council, Councillor Mitchell, Councillor Rendells.
That is not what we're voting against. We're voting against your mayoral minute and the way that it's been done.
Councillor Talty, Councillor Mackenzie, Councillor Hughes, Councillor Colley. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Yeah, and that motion is lost. So we'll now move on to public participation in Agenda Item Number Nine. In accordance with Section six point one, council meeting standing orders, a period of fifteen minutes may be made available by resolution to permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest relating to the local government. We have one resident who would like to speak today, so we will need a motion to suspend standing orders. Can I have a mover and a second of that meeting standing orders be suspended for a fifteen-minute public participation segment to allow members of the public to address council on matters of public interest related to local government? Moved by Councillor Boglary, was it? Yes, and sorry, yeah, and seconded by Councillor Bishop. Put the motion. Those in favour carried unanimously. And you may have noticed that signage in the chambers regarding public participation, the signage in the chambers regarding public participation meetings, it is council's usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name and suburb or organisation that they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. This information is recorded in the minutes of the meeting, which is a public document available for inspection at council's administration building and published on council's website. I also advise that the meeting is being livestreamed, and that by speaking, you acknowledge and agree that this meeting can be seen live in the public domain. Any person addressing the meeting will, A, state their name and suburb or organisation they represent and the subject they wish to speak about; B, stand unless able, unable to do so; C, act and speak with decorum; D, be respectful and courteous; E, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to, one, consider each application on its merits and consider any relevant matter in making my decision to allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Two, only those members of the public who have been, who have an approved application are able to do so. Details on how to apply are on council's website. Three, determine the maximum number of speakers based on the number of persons wanting to speak and the time available. Each speaker has a maximum of five minutes, dependent on the number of speakers. And four, withdraw the approval to address council before the time period has elapsed. Debate or discussion cannot be entered into at this time. And I now invite Narita Cassidy, resident of Kapalaba, regarding the Coimpen Creek Boardwalk to speak. Ms. Cassidy, if you could please move forward to the lectern to address council. Please state your name and suburb or organisation you represent and the subject you wish to speak about.
Narita Cassidy. I live in Kapalaba, no organisation, and I want to talk about the Coimpen Creek Boardwalk. Mike, is that a bit better?
Yeah.
Okay. A hundred and seventy responses to the petition may not seem like a lot. But if you were to imagine all those people in the council chambers or consider the capacity of any Redlands community hall, it actually is. Redlands is known for the love of wildlife and nature, which is why I am disappointed that something like the Coimpen Creek Boardwalk has been taken away from the community with no view to replace what was there with anything other than the alternative path, which is now the only option. The boardwalk was so much more than a shortcut. It was a part of the Koala Coast Trail. Community members had put their effort, labour and time into building it, and the boardwalk was used for a really long time, a quarter of a century. It did have wear and tear, but self-evidently was low impact, as the waterbirds, plants and other wildlife can attest. There were egrets, pied cormorants, a variety of ducks, butterflies and insects, just to name a few. A snapshot of the wildlife I've seen there is listed in this booklet, along with the health benefits of connecting with nature. With newer technology or alternative, cost-effective materials, reinstillation could last even longer. Something similar to the Ferrywren Boardwalk recently reopened at Indigenous Scapes is just an example, but whatever is low impact to keep people on the path, just like the original boardwalk did. I struggle to understand why it was found in the budget for footbridges very close by at Brewer Street and the back of the soccer fields to either be renewed with new timber or paint or repaired recently, whereas something as immersive as this bushwalk wasn't valued enough. Honestly, in my opinion, from walking the length of it on May twenty seventh, it needed repairing, not removal. Trying to express this to two councillors via an email with pictures was met with both de, both deaf ears and a single response, listing a raft of reasons that led to the combination of why the decision was made, none of which are satisfactory. Unfortunately, very quickly, the chainsaws arrived, effectively cutting off any avenue to at least engage with council about renewal or repair. There was very limited time, as it was blocked off in March of two thousand and twenty four, and there was limited notification that the boardwalk was actually being closed permanently, with only one council sign which named it as Dan Street Boardwalk at the Moreton Bay Road End underneath the overpass. And I couldn't find anything on the works update. Having recently found online development plans and site maps for Nolene Street from two thousand and twenty three that renamed the area of the boardwalk and the overarching plans from thirteen years ago, I can see how there is an intent to connect the piecemeal pathways from the past and revitalise the back of the shopping centre, although that may be quite a few years away yet. I actually work at Kapalaba Central, so I don't think the revitalisation is a bad thing, if it's done sensibly. But what I don't understand is how the boardwalk wasn't even included in this original site mapping. It's just not included in it. All that council couldn't see that the retention of the boardwalk or having both pathways was possible. A simple, cost-effective thirty metres of concrete from the start of the bushwalk to the footpath on Old Cleveland Road or even further around to the Brewer Street would have been a simple solution to connect, but it was never done. Why? There could be potential now to integrate to the section near Wallards Farm, which is not that far away. Utilising the underpasses would also be a lot safer option than the astroturf that is used for jaywalking at the moment.
Just letting you know, Narita, you have less than a minute to go.
Okay. There are consistent near misses on that section of Old Cleveland Road, and it's only going to get busier. There are so few enveloping natural areas in Kapalaba such as this that have a real immersive connection to nature. It was unique, and it does hold value to the community. As a wildlife lover, I acknowledge the fantastic work that's been done in the past to have protected areas that are not immersive or fully accessible to the public, such as the Coimpen Creek Koala Nature Refuge next door, the repair of the boardwalk in two thousand and twenty one, and the planting of native lemandra around the boardwalk itself. I ask that you now build on that positive reputation and reinstall the boardwalk while the area is still available to do so, with minimal or no tree or plant clearing necessary. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. All right, we'll now move back in. Can I have a mover and second of the meeting standing orders resume? Moved by Councillor Mitchell, seconded by Councillor Colley. Carrot, put the vote. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. So we now move to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is petitions and presentations. Councillors, we've got two petitions today. Councillor Mitchell, I believe you have a petition.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a petition from residents requesting that council declare cypress trees exempt from the provisions of the Redlands City Council Trees and Vegetation Protection Overlay and consider the following recommendations. And bear with me, it's a, it's a long one, but an important one. One, it is recommended that cypress pine be declared exempt to the owners of private land from the provisions of the Redlands City Protection Overlay to enable clearing of cypress pine, should they want, anywhere within their own lands for both obvious and serious potential health reasons. Two, it is recommended that cypress pine be declared exempt to the owners of private lands from the provisions of the Redlands City Council Protection Overlay to enable clearing of cypress pine, should they want, anywhere within their own land for serious fire hazard exclusion. Allied to and in consideration of the text, dimensions and directions recommended in Appendix Flame Two. Three, it is recommended that council consider removal or adequate trimming of cypress tree within their own lands of control that overhang or adjoining private property, more especially as they relate apart from health to the distancing and fire safety provisions mentioned in Appendix Flame Two. Four, it is recommended that council make deputation on behalf of residents and visitors to the state government to approach suitable university, appropriate institution or state health department to undertake certified studies into the vulnerability of Stratbrook Island residents, particularly Amity Point, of its dominant species of cypress pine. To A, human health, both upper and lower airways; B, fire risk and appropriate management. Point five, it is not recommended that council request medical certification from residents as to such allergens affecting their daily lives in order to establish exemption, as such extra time and cost to ratepayers is an added burden on today's already onerous cost of living. And that doctors, without personal costly individual cypress patient research themselves of the medical causation of inflammation of the upper airways, may be loathed to express some as causation. Residents' word, along with information presented in the attached appendices in the interests of health and safety, should be acceptable and of such concern enough as to prompt urgent council consideration of Recommendations One to Four. So I move that the petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the CEO for consideration.
Thank you, Councillor Mitchell. Can I have a second for the mo, for the petition? Thank you, Councillor Hughes. Sorry, Councillor Hughes, I believe you also have a petition.
Thank you. I have a petition from residents requesting the reinst, reinstillation of the Koolauan Creek Boardwalk. The Koolauan Creek Boardwalk was a little oasis with many birds feeding and living along the walk, such as egrets, ducks and cormorants. Having access to this valued green space is a positive to the community. Many people without cars used it to get through the shopping centre as well. There really isn't anything else like it close by, and it's a shame to lose it forever. And councillors also have a beautiful little booklet presented here by Ms. Cassidy, who has just spoken. And I'd like to move that the motion is of an operational nature and to be received and referred to the Chief Executive Officer for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hughes. Can I have a second for the motion? Councillor Colley? Put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Rendells, can I have an indication from you? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to presentations. I've not been advised of any presentations. So we move to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Order of Business. I've not been advised of any motion to alter the Order of Business. Moving to Agenda Item Number Twelve, Reports from the Office of the CEO. There are no reports listed from the Office of the CEO. So we move to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, which is Reports from Organisational Services. Thirteen point one is the interim June two thousand and twenty four monthly financial report. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Hughes, second, Councillor Bishop?
And thank, just one moment, because we've got to jump out and go back into the. Sorry, because it's, it was a late report? Okay, thank you. Just giving me a moment to change screens. Okay, I now have it on my screen. Thank you. This is an interim June monthly financial report, and I'd just like to emphasise the word interim as it's our, the end of our financial year, and we know a lot goes into these reports, and a lot of work is still continuing behind the scenes feverishly with our finance team, and we will have, as normal, a full report come, that will be audited come September. So I'd just like to really focus on the word interim, and then through you, Mayor, I'd like to ask the question of the finance team regarding our executive summary. So the executive, executive summary is page three of. So the executive summary is page three of 14 of the report. And I think all eyes are looking at that first line, the operating surplus and deficit. And I'd really appreciate an update from our officers regarding that position that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Acting CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. And through you, Chair, thank you councillor Hughes for the question. And before I do respond to the question, I might just touch on a comment that you made with respect to the interim financial statements. And so just to clarify and for the benefit of the new councillors, this is every year in July when we present the June interim financials, we have this interim status. What that means is as at midnight on 30th of June, we take a snapshot of our financial information management system and we use that data to form the report that you've got here in front of you today. What's not in this report, as councillor Hughes rightly said, is a significant number of end of year accounting adjustments. So they are accruals, deferrals, provisions, other accounting adjustments per the Australian accounting standards. That we've got a very busy finance team right now, working long hours and weekends and weekends worth of work. Now ideally, we wouldn't like to present a unfinalised set of financials to its users, but to comply with Section 204 of local government regulation, we have to present a financial report at each general monthly meeting. So that's why I'm really pleased councillor Hughes that you reinforced that this is interim. There are, I can promise you that changes will be made to these accounts. And then once this goes through the audit process and then as it comes to council in September for certification, we will have a final set that I would then encourage and recommend decisions to be made based off that information. Now circling back to councillor Hughes, your question and comment around the interim operating deficit of 9.37mm as well as the unfavourable variance to budget there of 9.77mm. So this really, as I've just mentioned, there is a lot of numbers that will be changing. This number will change, but there is, I can confirm, two primary contributors that make up this unfavourable variance and deficit at the moment. And the first one, I'll list those out, the first one is the timing of the Commonwealth Financial Assistance Grant to council. So a little bit of background there, Redland City Council and 76 other councils across Queensland are recipients of the Commonwealth Financial Assistance Grant every year. Now, those payments are made at various intervals throughout the year and in different portions. But the most significant portion of that payment has always been paid since the 1718 period in the month of June. And consequently, we have budgeted for that receipt in June every single year. Unfortunately, this year we did not receive the money in June. It was two days late. It came through 2nd of July. So unfortunately, with timing, that falls into the 2425 financial year. It will be in the July 24 monthly financials that you will see that will come to the next meeting in August. So unfortunately, that has adversely impacted our operating deficit for the 2324 financial year. But the good news is it is a timing difference only that council is not financially worse off. We will receive that money. We have received the money. It's just now another period. So unfortunately, that is. And according to the accounting standards, we have to recognise this type of revenue upon receipt. We cannot accrue for that in June where the budget sits, unfortunately. And then the second item, as you may recall from the May general meeting, I think it was item 20.2, we have made a $3.79 million payment under the Cosette Class Action High Court Determination. That one there, as you can appreciate, we did not have any budget for that. So that full payment has had a direct impact on our bottom line or our operating deficit. So with that, I hope those answers have supported your questions, councillor Hughes.
Thank you, councillor Bishop.
Thank you very much and appreciate the timing of this snapshot and the interim nature of those flexibility of those numbers. Mine is really just a comment and I refer to what is in diligent boards on our page 11, which is page six of the report. Just the interim capital expenditure, I think it's worth noting to the entire team, but through the mayor to CEO, acting CEO and all the officers, that the amount of expenditure this year in terms of our capital expenditure has been by far the most significant that this council has ever achieved. It's a testament not only to the operations and coordination of the ELT, but also the Portfolio Management Office and the multi-year preparation of expenditure so that we can hit the ground running. And yes, you can see that's been on track. This is a very welcome set of numbers and I know that there's some variance in that final month. But I think that that's really worth acknowledging the good work across the whole organisation. So through the mayor to all officers involved with that, that's great to see. And also just interested in the wash-up of the financial year, what the carryover is going to be. I think it's really important that we tie that and I've always mentioned that. But thanks very much to officers for the report.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. Councillor Talty?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I just have two questions. One is just a procedural question about the counting of the money as it comes in in July. And I am not any kind of accountant. But when you do your figures for tax, you're allowed to take three weeks of July for overruns and invoice payments, et cetera. And so can I just ask, is that not a thing in our accounting standards? And also, I'll go with that one first and then ask the second question. I'll wait.
Thank you, acting CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Chair. Thank you councillor Talty for the question. And that's a very good question and I can see exactly where you're coming from. To give you a little bit of background, the answer to your question is yes and no. There is, back in, I think it was 2019, the AAASB released two new accounting standards for revenue. One was AAASB 15 and one was AAASB 1058, which specifically speaks to grant income. Now, one of the concepts that was introduced was if there are conditions on the revenue that is paid or received by an entity that is sufficiently specific to performance obligations, then you have the right to defer that revenue or recognise that when it should fall, exactly like the scenario you just gave in that example. Unfortunately, with the Financial Assistance Grant, we've done comprehensive reviews and it's been through external audit with the Queensland Audit Office. There is no sufficiently specific performance obligations attached to that, so it's unhindered or unattached funding. So unfortunately, by default, it falls to when the revenue is received. That is unfortunately when it needs to be recognised.
Thank you. And also with regard to the $3.9 million for the part settlement of the Shin. Class action. If it's permissible, would you be able to have the officer outline the amount that that action has cost council, which the $3.9 million is part of that? And also the amount that the settlement that is predicted for the actual residents will receive? And I think it's important to put on record the cost to the community versus the benefit to those people who thought they were going to get a windfall.
Thank you, councillor Talty. I'll refer that to General Counsel Andrew Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. The final costs haven't been finalised. The claim amount has been finalised. That's at $3.79 million and that money has been paid. Those monies will be reduced by the applicant lawyers and funder. And I'm not sure if those monies have been dispersed to any of the individual claimants at this stage.
As I understand it, the bulk of that money will go overseas. Is that correct?
So there is an international funder behind the class action. Whether the bulk of that money will go overseas, look, that's subject to a court decision. The court will need to approve the repayment scheme. And that will involve, you know, significant costs both to the lawyers and to the funder.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, we are party to it. It hasn't been listed currently, so I can't give an update on that yet.
So I think going back, are there any other questions firstly? No, we're exhausted. Councillor Hughes?
Thank you. Following on from councillor Bishop's question about the capital expenditure, through the Chair to our team, I think Dr Davis, that $128 million there that we've absolutely been able to get out the door, are you able to speak to that? Thank you. Because I'm understanding that, we know that costs have gone up, but significantly this is the most amount of work as a city that we've able to be delivered to our community. And I think that that should not go through unnoticed. Thank you.
Through you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Hughes. Look, we took a different approach last year. We had the inaugural industry briefing where we invited contractors, consultants to come and we talked about our capital programme. We have noticed a significant increase in the tender returns, so the number of people tendering on work. And so what that meant is that we had more interest in our capital programme. We also got out very early with our capital programme and we repeated that again. We had our second inaugural, oh sorry, our second industry briefing in May this year. And we're already noticing, we're in the market for probably 50% of the capital programme already. And so hopefully by about September, October, we will actually have contracts and commitments for the majority of our capital programme already. So it's really taking a proactive approach. As councillor Bishop also indicated, since I've been here for four years, I've been trying to introduce a multi-year programme. So this year will be the first year that we come to council to get approval for, you know, a multi-year capital programme for some of the asset classes where we know we're going to spend a particular amount of money. Much like we do in operational, we're just going to bring it to the capital portfolio, which means that we can, year on year, deliver more efficiently, better value for money for our community and just.
Sorry, unless there are any speakers against councillor Hughes, would you like to sum up?
Thank you. Just in that reiterating of the interim and appreciate on behalf of councillors, the enormous body of work that does go on behind the scenes. I really think through our acting CFO to our team, we truly appreciate the efforts that go into these reports and all the work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, I'll now put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Carried unanimously. Moving to agenda item number 13.2, which is the Audit and Risk Management Committee Report. Okay, 6th of June 2024. Do you need some time councillor Hughes? Just take a second. Do you need some more time councillor Hughes? Okay, we'll just take a few minutes for some technical issues. All right, agenda item number 13.2, Audit and Risk Management Committee, 6th of June 2024. So 13.2, do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Bishop. Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Happy to move that officer's recommendation. And I'm also happy again to be on the committee once again. And it was the first time for the new mayor as well. And I think we both found it was very informative and the reports were very thorough. And I guess that's why I'm a little bit frustrated because what we actually get at the general meetings is very simply just an indexing of the reports that are presented to that Audit and Risk Committee. And it doesn't include the detail of the reports that we actually got. So coming to the general meeting is this, whereas we probably got something that was about that thick to read. It took most of a Sunday afternoon to go through it. And the reports themselves then analysed and we have very in-depth discussions on them. And from that, the action items that you see listed here, or some of them, that's where that comes from. So years ago, I actually asked, could more detail be put in here? And I'd just like to say that going future, that's what I'm going to be seeking, is a more fulsome report and disclosure of what we actually get to read because it is really valuable information. And I think the next agenda item is actually on the charter of the committee and it's all about good governance and accountability. So I think that the two items actually marry up together today. But I also think our reports, because in here you can see, I've just listed some. We discuss such things as project management, CCTV, workplace health and safety. There were risk commendations and there was also asset revaluations. But you don't actually get that knowledge from what's here. So going forward, I'm enjoying the role and I will be seeking to have more fulsome reports coming to general meeting for everybody.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Are there any speakers against? So councillor Rendles, you have a question?
Thank you councillor Boglari. It was really informative hearing that. As the other new person on the committee mayor, I'm interested in your views about the process and also whether you're feeling confident about the financial management and processes in place for council.
Yeah, I think we're a bit off topic in relation to that. As far as the process goes, and my first meeting, I think it was, as councillor Boglari said, very informative. It's a learning process. First meeting for me. I found the reports very fulsome. And seconding councillor Boglari's wishes for probably greater transparency, whatever we can feed through to a general meeting for public consumption, I think is important. And as I said, this is a learning process. But yeah, it was a very good first meeting and I'm looking forward to the next.
Councillor Bishop?
Just a comment, as someone who regularly does attend and listen, the discussion across the whole of the organisation from officers with very comprehensive reports, updates from the CEO, it's very informative and I encourage all councillors to listen in whenever they can. I agree, it would be great to have more information there, but I can just assure that there is a lot across the entire scope of the organisation which does take place in those conversations. And us all being across that, I think is really important. And whatever we can share, I'd be happy to see more information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Hughes?
Thank you. Regarding in the minutes, item 7.1, which was managing the cyber security risks and exercise Harrison, which we actually spoke to at the last general meeting as well, there's an action item there. That's on page six of the minutes. The action item that management to report back to the Audit and Risk Committee. Just that I think we have spoken about that in general meeting previously. So I'd just like to ask the question that when we get an update on that, if that can feed back through as we've just mentioned, I think that would be really pertinent to our community on how much is going on behind the scenes. We can't give, you know, the whole report, but just a brief update filtering through from that minute. Thank you. If that's a question to you, Mayor, if that's possible, please.
I'll have to take advice. Actually, can I refer that to General Manager of Organisational Services?
Of course you can, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thanks for the, uh, comments councillor Hughes. Uh, the team have done some great work, um, with, um, exercise Harrison that was undertaken. We did commission an external company. I can speak, you know, freely if everybody's happy for me to do that now. Uh, Mayor, if that suits you, I can just speak really quickly to what that, um, paper was about. We did commission an external company to come in and facilitate a session with, uh, our immediate responders, um, in, uh, essentially undertaking an exercise of what, how we might respond if we were to have a significant, uh, cyber-related event. These sorts of exercises we do in a cyber context, but also in disaster management, um, context. We do it to, um, exercise and make sure that the plans and the processes that we've got in place, we put in place, I call it during peacetime, um, that, that we know where, you know, who's responsible for which bit, how our different teams work together. So that if we were in, ever in the event of a stressful environment like that, that we, uh, we've practised and we've rehearsed these sorts of things so that we know, um, who to call on, where key and pertinent information is being held. Um, we did that session with officers initially. It was a whole day exercise, uh, where the officers, um, accountable across our organisation, who all have different roles, um, you know, from obviously very strong IT, uh, role in responding to cyber events through to, um, working with our executive leadership team and, and, and then briefing our council, um, through to, you know, communicating with members of the public and the community. So we, we flex our muscle, if you like, in, in all of those different response categories. Um, we did that as a session at the beginning of the day with officers and then moved into a, a leadership session with ELT at the end of the day. And, um, pleasingly, the results from that exercise were that we were, um, in the external facilitators view, in a, a very good shape for the work that we've been doing. As you, um, expect, when, when you do an audit, whether it be this kind of thing, um, or a normal internal audit, we do that with the purpose of bringing an external expert in to, with a fresh set of eyes to give us an idea of where we might have some opportunities for improvement. And so there are a couple of things that we're looking at, um, that we're, uh, going to be working on. And there's a, um, as it with normal audits, there's a list of recommendations that, that come from those things. There was nothing earth-shattering that was, um, concerning for, for us as an organisation, but there are some continuous improvement activities that we have underway. Some of them have been finalised already, um, and, and others, uh, remain, uh, to be closed out. But we do have an action item to come back to the next audit committee, um, just to, um, to close that out when those actions have been fully addressed. So I hope that answers, uh, your question.
I'm, I'm really, on behalf of community, thank you so much for that because it, it's important. And we are all, um, acutely aware of how vulnerable we are. So knowing that we're front foot, we are proactive, and we have continuous, um, uh, improvements and continuous monitoring is really valuable to our community. And this is the opportunity we get to share with our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the response, General Manager. Thank you councillor Hughes. So councillor Boglari, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, that's exactly what I'm asking, what can come back to council? So I actually had about three pages of reporting back for today, but I got told that I'd referred to reports, which were still confidential. So that's why we didn't get such a briefing today. But that's what I have asked legals, that we need to understand what is confidential, what we can bring back. We don't have to bring back the whole reports. We can bring back summaries, um, like the general manager just gave. And going forward, I'll make sure that that's, hopefully, um, we can have more information for the community.
Thank you councillor Boglari. All right, I will now put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Carried unanimously. We now move on to agenda item number thirteen point three, which is the Audit and Risk Management Committee Charter. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Rendles. Uh, councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
This is actually the charter which I referred to before, um, for that actual risk and audit committee. Um, it's got it all in the background there, that the primary objective of the committee is to promote good corporate governance through the provision of independence, assurance, oversight, and advice to council, because there are external people on the committee. And the CEO on matters relating to fraud and corruption control, risk management, internal control, governance, compliance, audit, financial statement preparation and financial reporting. So you can see it does, um, cover quite a wide range of very important aspects of council. And the objectives, um, are also listed out there and the responsibilities of the charter. And as I said, good governance and accountability is part of that. And so going forward, that's where I'd like to expand a little bit with the reporting back to actually, though all councillors actually get all the reports and all councillors can sit and listen to the meeting, um, at that time, I think it's important that we bring it back to the general meeting for the community.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Are there any speakers against? Any questions? No. I will now put the motion. Those in favour of the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Carried unanimously. Moving along to agenda item number fourteen, uh, thirteen point four, which is a review of Redlands City Council standing, meeting standing orders. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Tolty?
I'm actually seeking to move, uh, recommendation two.
Option two, so that council resolves to not adopt the Redlands City Council meeting standing orders as outlined in attachment three and request a further review be undertaken. Do I have a seconder for that motion? Councillor Mackenzie? So that's now, option two is now the live motion. Uh, so councillor Mc- uh, Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it, overall, this is, um, a fairly, um, stock standard review, but there are just some issues in there, I think, that need further consideration and discussion. There were a number of matters that were raised by different councillors that, um, uh, are not changed in the standing orders at the moment. And I think we just need to have a, have a more close, um, discussion about that. Uh, so I think this is just going to give us the opportunity to, um, to look more closely at the details, as this is important. This is a document that defines, um, the actions and, and behaviours within the general meeting, which is our, our most important duty as councillors. Uh, there are a few minor things too. Uh, I'll give you an example. At six point one, one point one, which relates to petitions. We're seeking to clarify for the community, um, what council can and can't do in relation to activities. And, and it's perfectly sensible that we don't accept petitions which relate to activities or responsibilities of other levels of government. But the actual wording at six point one, one point one says, uh, is a matter which council has powers to act. And to my mind, it should say, is a matter within which council has the power to act. And rather than the word matter, we should look at things like topics, requests, et cetera. I just think there are some details in there that need to be further reviewed. And this will give us an opportunity to do that and possibly bring it back as soon as next month for, um, finalisation. Thank you.
Are there any speakers against? Just question. Councillor Boglari, you had a question?
Um, I was in the workshop when we worked shop this and all the changes were basically made by our governance officers. And I've got, in, in matters like this, I think, I, I trust our governance officers that they've got it right. And I don't remember any councillor actually bringing up any burning desire for change. So I was just wondering, councillor Tolty mentioned them, um, if she could just go through them for me. Because if we're going to vote on another motion, I want to know what they're based on.
Uh, well, off the top of my head councillor, uh, the timeframe for, uh, bringing a motion has been extended from eight days to twelve days. And, uh, I certainly have some issues with that in regard to the changing, uh, policy that's working behind that, uh, timeframe. Uh, previously, we had fortnightly meetings and we, uh, introduced the, uh, eight-day timeframe in order to allow, uh, in assurance that councillors had the opportunity to work with department officers to, uh, bring a professional, well-worded legal motion when they wanted to bring a motion. That has now been reinterpreted to suggest that that motion has to be word perfect twelve days before, rather than just an indication that says that, you know, the councillor intends to move a motion and then will work further with officers to line that out before the agenda is released. So that is one thing that I certainly raised in the discussions.
Before we go, yeah, before we go on to the next one, could we just have an officer explain that to me? Because my understanding was it was eight working days and that was causing confusion. Now it's twelve days, but it's the same thing. Can I just have clarity on that?
Thank you councillor Boglari, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, it was originally eight business days and there was confusion with regard to public holidays and weekends. So we made it twelve days, so it get, get clear day. So I'd gave that clarity around that.
Thank you.
Right. Well, it's not the timeframe that I object to, it's the interpretation of the receiving of the motion without further change. And that's not clarified in this. Uh, another matter that was raised, and I'm going off the top of my head here, was, uh, as I say, there, there's some wording i- in, uh, six point one, one, which I think is a problem. Councillors also raised the delegation of a representative in, in the rare circumstance that, uh, the mayor and the deputy mayor are not available. Uh, that traditionally has always been, um, someone is elected from among the councillors to, uh, chair the meeting. Uh, and so we haven't got clarity on whether this, um, delegation of a representative is actually in the, um, meeting standing orders as recommended by the, uh, Local Government Act or the Local Government Department, or whether that's just something that's been put in. I'd like further clarification on that. There are just a number of issues that I thought it was way too messy to try to go through in council meetings. So I thought it was better to take another month and get it right.
Thank you councillor Tolty. I believe we've got some response from corporate governance for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to councillor Tolty. Yes, uh, councillor Colley raised that issue with me this morning. And I've had legal advice that, number one, the mayor's delegate is in the model standing orders as depart, as delivered by the Department of Local Government. Um, but it is not a necessary, um, item to have in there. It can, it, it's up to the council whether we want it in or out. Um, section two fifty-eight of the Local Government Act does allow the mayor to delegate powers to any councillor. Um, so it, it, it is in the act. Um, we have traditionally, um, followed the model standing orders from the department. And when there are changes, that's why we brought this, uh, back to council. So we include those, uh, uh, recommended model meeting procedures or model standing orders in, in everything we do. And then, uh, obviously there are certain aspects that over many, many years that the Redlands City Council have, uh, or has, um, had specific to our, our, uh, our council. Um, I think I'd look at councillor Mitchell, um, with regard to the petitions because, uh, um, a couple of years ago, there was an issue that, uh, wasn't a council issue. It was a state and state or federal government issue. And, um, having the feedback from councillor Mitchell, we included that. And yeah, we might be a little bit clumsy with the words, but the intent is that, um, if it is not a local government matter, it is a state or federal government matter, we refer it to that, to that specific body. So, and, and for independent review, yes, so. Oh, so the standing orders here. So, um, we've had the, uh, Department of Local Government as well as, uh, King and Company look at the standing orders that we reviewed, um, and they've come back as they were. So, um, but when it's all said and done, it's, it's in the hands of the councillors. We want, we want to have the best possible standing orders that are understandable and followed by, uh, by councillors. Um, and if there are concerns, we're happy to talk to each councillor and raise that, you know, discuss those concerns. If we need to come back to a, um, a councillor's workshop before the, before we've finalised them, happy to, um, prosecute them at, at that stage.
Okay. Does that satisfy your questions councillor Tolty? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that, Madam Chair, not going to die in a ditch over it. I just thought it was better to tidy it up before we adopt it.
Councillor Gole?
A question for, um, Tony, through you Chair, um, corporate governance. Um, in section six point one, six point one, there's an addition of the, the phrase properly made into that. I understand that there's been an amendment to make, uh, greater clarity in terms of the days that there's a requirement there. Uh, we've seen a mayoral minute this morning, which literally changed three times in the space of an hour in front of councillors. Am I correct in understanding that this addition of the term properly made would mean then that there's no further changes and what's presented will mean that's what goes on the agenda?
No, so, so.
No, I mean for.
With regard to a notice of motion, yeah. The, the, the intent was from a process point of view, that when the CEO puts the notice of motion on the agenda, that it is finalised and, and as the councillor has requested at the time.
Well, that's several days after the, the twelve days.
Yes. But, but some councillors, with all due respect, leave it to the last minute with a brief, um, email to the coun- to the CEO, asking for a notice of motion to be prepared. And the CEO is basically asked that if a notice of motion is to come before the council, that it is properly made, as in done and dusted, before it hits his desk, before the deadline at five PM on the, on the deadline day. It's a process issue and, um, I g- I guess, um, I can't put words in the CEO's mouth, but, uh, um, he would like them to have, be fully made before it hits his desk on the, on the deadline date.
Thank you.
Councillor Bishop, did you have a question?
Uh, yes. Look, having workshopped this and some of these points being raised, um, and the ones that I thought that had been outstanding have actually been, I think, addressed councillor Tolty through the chair, um, with exception of the one regarding the properly made nature of the councillor notices of motion. Um, and I do understand that there is a difference between the CEO's expectation that that's going to be locked in, um, executive language that can be managed by the organisation. But it's different to an officer report. So I do acknowledge that a councillor's often responding to evolving matters, and that's the process that we have. So I, I do acknowledge that that might be subject to some change as councillors discuss things going forward. So I think that's worthwhile. But I'm not sure that we need to, do we need to go back to, uh, another workshop on that? Or is there something that can be done? I'm happy with trying to get that sorted, but I, I had thought we were, we were there.
Thank you councillor Bishop. I'll just take, um, councillor Gole, you have a question?
Thanks Chair. Um, simple question. Would it matter if we waited another month to get it right? I think that's the key thing here. There's obviously a lot of discussion being generated about it right now. And it's probably best just to let, like, either lay on the table or go with option two so that we can bring it back next month.
Thank you councillor Gole. So I've got a, a response from corporate governance. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gole for the question. And I, I agree with councillor Tolty. These are very important, um, and it's the running of the meeting. If councillors, if I, um, talk to each councillor to find out their concerns so we can put it, put it together again, um, that, uh, all, all fears are allayed. And we have the best possible document that, uh, helps us govern the, uh, council meetings as we move forward. Happy to do that and, and have it back to, uh, the August meeting. Through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop?
Just clarifying, clarification on process. If we do not adopt this, can it come back to that next meeting? Or is it better to let it lie on the table and make the adjustment? I'd just like to ask that. Because isn't there a period of time that we need to, we can't, we can't bring it back?
No, I, I think the, the op- option two is that, um, we'll get, we'll look at it again, but it's basically not adopt it and we'll come back at a later date. So we can bring it back by, by August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, we'll just wait while the, just wait while the change is being made. Councillor Tolty, are you wanting to add August into that motion? Date of August?
I don't mind, Madam Chair. We can, I, I'm happy for it to come back for August. And I, I would have thought the other councillors would like it resolved. and I, I would have thought the other councillors would like it resolved by then. It's fairly minor changes, but yeah, I, I am not uh wed to that particular.
So the motion now reads that council resolves to not adopt Redland City Council meeting standing orders as outlined in attachment three, and request a further review be undertaken and a report brought back to the twenty first of August, twenty twenty four general meeting. Yes, that's a correct date. All right. So now put the motion, those in favour. So we have councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colly. Those against councillor Boglari, councillor Bishop, councillor Mitchell. The motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number thirteen point five, Redlands Coast Event Strategy, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine.
I had a procedural motion there.
Councillor Hughes?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move that this item be left, lay on the table. Thank you very much, Mayor. We have discussed and we would, uh, we're seeking some more information. Thank you.
Just taking, just having a, just having a moment to clarify. All right, just seeking some clarification. So if we lay this report on the table, it will be the report that comes back to council?
My, my apologies for that. I've got my terminology incorrect. Looking at option three, that the council resolves to not adopt the Redlands Coast Strategy, can we actually add there that we would like the strategy brought back? Because we.
Okay, we'll just get some guidance from, from corporate governance.
We, we, we're getting wording, but I don't think anything has come through for it.
Councillor Hughes, we'll just get some guidance from corporate governance in relation to the, the motions already.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you councillor Hughes. Um, we just did it on a previous um item, um that we deferred, uh deferred it, in other words, to bring back at a, a future council meeting, and we can do that the same. So words with option three to say, uh, the council resolves not to adopt the Redlands Coast Events Strategy Action Plan twenty twenty four and bring back to a future meeting of council.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're just going to take a moment to double check. Okay, councillor Hughes, because you moved a procedural motion, will, you'd need to withdraw that motion?
Yes, I, I did say my apologies. I had my terminology wrong. I withdraw that, and I, I'd like to move option three, uh, with the fact that we'd lay on the table to be brought back to a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So it's an alternate motion?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Councillor Hughes, you mentioned lay on the table again. You need to withdraw that. So, no, you just mentioned it then.
Okay, all right, slow, slowing down. My apologies. Absolutely withdrawing the comment to lay on the table. My terminology was wrong. That is my bad. Looking at option three, that council resolves to not adopt the Redlands Coast Event Strategy and Action Plan twenty four to twenty nine, and that further that we had seek that the, I can't, bring the report back to a future meeting of council. Thank you.
Thank you. So, seconda, councillor Bishop. And ca, so. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to that motion?
Thank you. We understand uh the work that's gone into this report. We just had a, a in, in conversation, there was quite a few points we were still looking to clarify. And uh as a, a, a group, as our council, we had discussed this, that we would like just some more information. We support in general, but as we've just gone with the motion previous, we look to just seek a little bit more clarity. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Are there any speakers against? No, in that case. Four, no, okay, questions?
I just wonder, uh, similar to the last point, without labouring too much, um, it's a, it's a fairly high-level document, and I was quite comfortable with it as it was. I just wondered what specifically councillors were concerned about, just a general precis of that, if it's possible. Otherwise, I can wait until we workshop it again.
Yeah. Can I refer that to the general manager of organisational services? Or just, or you're just, are you just asking for further comment in general now from councillors?
Mayor, I can answer your question if you like. You, you, um, we did have a workshop with councillors on Monday. There were some questions that were raised where councillors requested a little bit further information, uh, which the team have taken on board to workshop. So, um, but the team are here, they can speak to, to the motion, but I think uh based on what I heard on Monday, it probably is best to bring back to a workshop so that we can um give it the fullness of discussion, uh, and hopefully we can bring it back to a, a future meeting um of council in the next month or so.
I, I, I think that sounds like a good plan. We take it back to workshop and, and discuss it. Any other questions? No, in that case, I will put the motion. Those in favour of the motion that currently stands? Thank you, carried unanimously. We move to agenda item number thirteen point six, the annual contracting plan procurement and contracts manual and procurement policy. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mitchell, do I have a seconda? Councillor Mackenzie? Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, I'll let people read the officer's recommendation as it is, of course, just to speak to it. The, these things are very, very important, the uh one, the annual contracting plan. We talk a lot about our procurement and, and our, our passion for both local procurement, but also value for money. Um, and within this report, you'll see the, the track changes, um, and of course, the corporate procurement policy. I just want to talk fairly generally about it. Um, firstly, please note there are a large range of contracts of public works that are uh embedded in the attachments. Um, we saw uh earlier that even on the capital works, we're on track for another uh record, which will be fantastic. Um, there's some minor drafting changes, uh, these around improved clarity, clarity, but also seeking increased internal efficiencies. So, again, looking for value for money uh within, uh, using public monies. Uh, it's certainly important that council review these processes regularly to keep them fit for purpose. In a contemporary sense, the world changes uh very rapidly at the moment. Um, so it, it is important that these reviews. And I just wanted to point out, the practices and contracting processes are underpinned by some really important values that we hold within the city. Value for money. We want to develop open and effective competition uh with our suppliers. Environmental protection. And ethical behaviour and fair dealings. So often point out our policies and our guidelines for people, because that's really where the heart of the organisation sits and where our community can put a bit of soul uh towards things that might be cut and dried, finances and contracts and things like that. So, yeah. Thank you. Move the officer's motion.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Are there any speakers against? Councillor Hughes, you have a question?
Uh, thank you. On, uh, depending on how you're looking at your pages, the first page, page one hundred and sixty-five of the report issues, the second bottom, on the bottom of the page, the second bottom bullet point, there's a, a, a note there, new section on revenue contracts to address audit recommendations. Could I seek a little more information on that? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes.
Through you, Mayor. Um, I'll just ask our chief procurement officer, she can um join the lectern and answer your question. Councillor Hughes?
Thank you. Uh, we've included revenue contracts into the manual to respond to the audit recommendation, which was to make more visible the uh, and talk to the practices of having that diligence in reviewing uh rates under the revenue contract and that we're invoicing accordingly to those rates and checking the volumes um before we res, issue the invoice and receive tho, that revenue. We're talking about revenue contracts that are in scope of the manual uh scrap metal um sales or advertising for our bus shelters. So we're just calling out that diligence activity that you would apply to any goods and services contracts, you apply that to revenue contracts.
Thank you. Do I have any, any other questions? Councillor Rendles?
Um, in, in respect to the procurement, and particularly, I'm looking at um section five point nine and section six point one, that we've had some discussions with council officers in relation to developing um procurement options for the southern Moreton Bay Islands. Um, the issues of the cost of delivering services to southern Moreton Bay Islands has been raised in the budget debates as one of the contributing factors to um the overall budget costs. And we've had some discussions about bi-local. That my, my question is, I note in section five nine, um, which I think is on page thirteen, that there is the option to be able to split orders by region. Um, does that mean that if we're going out to a tender for um, say, something like timber disposal or green waste or carding air, that um we can look at splitting it so that components of it are for the islands? Um, also in respect to figure four, in terms of the value risk metrics, you know, that might be an area to also consider, you know, the economic benefit to the islands, particularly in terms of developing employment and training opportunities, you know, islands um throughout purchasing processes.
Through you, Mayor. If you're happy, I'll ask the chief procurement officer to respond.
So with respect to the green waste example, that would be considered in options that would get analysed to then put forward the preferred option, which would be very detailed in a significant contracting plan or a procurement plan. So uh various sourcing options would be considered, and that could be a geographical model, um, whether you would choose to fragment that supply or bundle it all together, that would be analysed and then recommended in a, the options, yeah, yeah. But you, we are, with respect to order splitting, we are looking at what's the total cost, the total demand for our council, and how do we best treat that and go out to market for that?
The second point raised was in terms of looking at your value metrics, um, that whether, you know, that there's not, there's not really, though, though bi-local is talked in a generic way through, through the document, and also with reference to bi-local in Queensland. Um, I think, you know, in, indeed, for Redlands and in any area that has um multiple regional centres, um, that bi-local will often have a connotation of actually more geographical local.
Yes. Um, sorry, could I just get you to expand on?
But it's not in there. You know, it's, it's, it's not in um the value metrics.
So it's irrespective of, uh, so that may come in the application of the um processes, the procurement processes. So with respect to the value risk matrix, we're looking. Sorry. Um, we're looking at, in the value risk matrix, we're looking at what is our demand for this good or service, um, what is the total cost? And we, you know, we review our spend and baseline costs um for many, for um, for that service. And then we look at um all of the different factors in that value risk matrix or assessment. So it's a questionnaire that we go through, um, and that is looking at it on a total cost basis. Um, and so with respect to then looking at it from a local perspective, if it was, um, we, we are looking at, yes, we treat local through our processes in terms of evaluating and giving it weighting from a geographical perspective and local business benefits. Um, we do too look at it, like, if it was strategic and a very complex strategy, you def, we'd definitely be considering market factors. So more broadly, with respect to, um, I, I don't know if it was offshoring, there'd be geopolitical factors that we'd be in, looking at. Um, we'd be looking at um supply chain constraints. So complex strategies, and if you look out to other private entities, they struggle. Um, they're, you know, billion-dollar enterprises that do struggle when it comes to the Australian market. And so sometimes you do have to look back into local manufacturing and local supply for s, uh, security of supply. So all of those factors are considered when you are putting together your sourcing strategy.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. In that case, I will now put the motion to move the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Thank you. That is councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colly, councillor Bishop and myself. Those against councillor Rendles and councillor Talty. The motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number fourteen, advocacy major projects in economic development. Item number fourteen point one is the state election advocacy. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Sorry, councillor Bishop.
Actually, we had some discussion, and I would like to move the amended motion, uh, which does include uh changes to motion number three in regard to statewide approach to fire ant and uh against cost shifting.
Sorry, this is the wrong item. I think that's the next item.
Um.
The fire ant?
This is the state, uh, this is the state election advocacy, yeah, and, but I believe there was an amendment to that. Okay, sorry, uh. Okay, thank you. So the amendment in this one is, does relate to item number six. And the proposal, which I believe has been shared by general consul to councillors, is as amended uh in priority number six, which is to do with native title. To recognise the importance of native title involves a shared understanding for the whole community to progress the reconciliation journey. I think it's important that the reconciliation element is, is um, is part of that process, uh, and just included in the motion.
Yeah, we're just going to get some advice.
It was just, uh, just by way of context, it was just to acknowledge the importance of clarity, which is the purpose of the motion. Um, but I just uh believe that um in order for everyone to be on that same journey, that that reconciliation journey is, is an important part of what our intent is. And I think it's in line with what our aspirations are with seeking that further clarification, both from the state um and also through the native title court process.
Thank you councillor Bishop. I'm just getting some advice.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. The question was for.
The question was for context. The context of this amendment is to, I would say, better align or make it clear, this is... Oh, sorry, this is not, oh, okay. So.
So that's, that's, yeah, that's an amended motion. Yeah, so I need a second, so I'm sorry, I need a second, a sec. Alternate motion. So councillor, so an alternate motion, seconded by councillor Boglari. Thank you. So now Andrew can speak to it. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor, councillors, I apologise for that. So this amendment takes the language from council's corporate plan, which also has one of its priorities for corner of the country, and its importance of native title. It puts in a context that the councillors and the council believes that native title is very important and that the point of this priority for the state advocacy document is that the community, the broader community, needs a shared understanding to progress reconciliation. This priority is so that that community can have that shared understanding. The council's been advocating for a number of years that native title claims, native kind of processes can only benefit from open and transparent debate.
Thank you. Councillor Talty?
In alignment with our future meeting standing orders, I'd just like to note, madam chair, that if this is not supported, I will be happy to move the officer's recommendation. And I would also note that the comments just made by the officer apply equally to both. And this is an unnecessary change and, yeah, not worth the paper it's written on. Thank you.
Thank you. So speakers for, sorry, speakers for councillor Boglari?
Having recently been to the national conference in Canberra, and I think councillor Talty and councillor Mackenzie, you were present when the motions were put, then you'd be very much aware of the message that Redlands received in that room. So we had a native title motion down there, and it was totally misunderstood because of the way we had it wording, worded. Unfortunately, in the morning, there was a representative on a forum, which probably spoke negatively about Redlands City Council, which didn't also help. But I agree with having that in there. So it shows that we are on the journey for the shared understanding, because no one actually, both all stakeholders involved at the moment are agreeing on one thing, and that more education and understanding has to happen along this journey. And I think just having these wordings in there takes any sting out of our motions that other people are reading into it. It's not our intent, and I think we need to put our intent to go forward together on the journey, which is, as was stated by council, it's in our corporate policies. I think we need to put it in there, just to make sure it is very clear, and we can't have the comments that were said to us down in Canberra repeated.
Thank you, councillor Boglari.
Or the motion won't get up, which is what happened in Canberra.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Councillor Mackenzie? Those speakers against?
No, it's a question, which may then progress to me speaking against.
Actually, if we, if we still, we're, sorry, which may?
Progress to me speaking against, so.
So it's, at the moment, we're in for and against, so you're speaking against?
Well, there's no clarity. Well, yeah, I'll have to speak against because we've just got a statement, and it's a statement that doesn't fit under the what or the why. So unless it fits into that, which is what my question was going to be, then no, I will speak against it and I won't support this motion, and I will support reverting back to the council's, the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other speakers for? Well, I might speak for, actually, before we move into questions. So as another person that was one of four people that attended ALGA, I support the comments made by councillor Boglari. An issue of wording, our motion down there was misinterpreted, and we did receive negative comment, which then has an impact about how we're viewed as a council. So I think the inclusion of some wording around the intent and explanation is actually a good thing. Speakers against? Councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'll speak against. This is completely unnecessary and to the long target. In fact, I think it will backfire. The, we are on the journey and our council has a proud record and multiple avenues where we have shown our community that we are deadly serious in internal rap, in external rap, and an enormous amount of operational capital work. So we're on the journey and I don't think we need to be apologists or reactive to what I understand was some pretty inappropriate and negative comments at ALGA and elsewhere. So I think this will actually, by highlighting one of our 10 advocacy positions will backfire and actually highlight things even more and have a negative effect. This shows that we're sometimes running scared and tails are wagging dogs. We are on the journey and we are serious and we are doing things great. And this is unnecessary wording, and the original officer's motion was the appropriate one. I'll be voting against this.
Point of order, madam chair, if I can?
Councillor Talty?
Thank you. I think things have been...
Sorry, tell councillor Talty, what's your point of order?
I think things have been a little bit confused here. The next item is 14.2, which talks to the motions that will be put to the local Queensland Conference. This item is our state election advocacy.
True, our state members.
And I think speaking about motions at the national conference might be a bit premature. That's for the next motion. If you want to compare the way we represented ourselves whilst presenting motions to wider bodies, but this motion is about state election advocacy. So I think things are a little bit confused. So if you could please clarify and get things back on the motion.
Yeah, we're just trying to clarify, what was your particular point of order?
My point of order is that the comments we've received so far are not speaking to this motion, this week.
Okay, thank you. So we are just, so we're up to, I've lost track. So any, any questions? I think we've exhausted for and against. Any questions? Councillor Rendles?
It's on the issues that were raised in respect to the comments by councillor Boglari and yourself, that given that this is informing the priorities that we're going to the candidates for the state election and their respective parties, you know, the reference was made without this won't get up on the floor, which seems to be linking back to ALGA. I can't understand the relation to ALGA at all for this.
Okay, point, point of order. Yeah, so I guess, so in relation to councillor Toly's point of order before, if we stick to this motion, we're moving back to where we were before, so we'll just draw it back in relation to this motion. Are there any questions in relation to this particular motion? So councillor Boglari?
Look, I'll just explain my comments. I shouldn't have said it won't get up. I meant what I was concerned about is reputational damage again. We have to be so careful when we are talking about this actual native title and the journey with our wording. The comments that were said to us during the actual putting of motions down there and afterwards.
Again, yeah, I guess.
I was just explaining my comments. I meant, I want us to make sure in every going forward, when we're talking to the state government or whatever, we have to make sure our intent is clear to the outside eyes. We know what we mean, but we've got to make sure it's clear to the outside eyes so that we don't have a repeat.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Acting CEO?
So councillors, thank you for the discussion. Just for clarity, this is about the state election advocacy priorities. I'll draw your attention to item number three, which does talk about a communications campaign to support the advocacy efforts for respective projects and initiatives. So we do need to make sure we're debating 14.1. You do have the opportunity, when do we get to 14.2, to talk about the local government association motion? So if that assists, but I do draw your attention to item number three.
Thank you, acting CEO. Councillor Gole?
Thanks, ma'am. Could I ask through you two officers, and I'll try to put this in a context, in the past, we've gone to state or federal candidates with these processes. Can anyone actually articulate where we've had a success out of these particular approaches? Because nine times out of 10, these people are backbenchers, they have no oversight on expenditure, they can go to, they'd have to get the minister's approval to get this stuff across the line. Have we actually had any success by going to each candidate and going, here's our wish list? What have we actually achieved in the past by doing this body of work? And has there been any successes over and above grants? Okay? And this is where I sort of look at this body of work and think to myself, we do this every time. They all promise so much at an election, but nothing's really delivered. Councillor Boglari's been in since 2008. Since 2008, Cleveland Redland Bay Road hasn't been fixed through Thorlands and that. So I guarantee you, they were all on wish lists in the past. So I'm trying to understand the relevance of the importance and the body of work that's being presented here to people who have no authority to actually do anything. They're backbenchers, if they get elected.
Thank you.
So where's the successes from the past?
So thank you, councillor Gole. I'll take that as a comment and acting CEO will reply.
Thank you, councillor Gole. The item before you is to endorse the advocacy priorities. It isn't to talk about past successes or wins or failures. The issue really is to be able, Redlands City Council and Redlands coast, to be able to put on the agenda what is important to this council and to this city, and to have that very clearly articulated to candidates and, you know, through that process. And that's what this is all about. This was workshop with councillors to look at what those priorities are, then this is formulating those priorities as part of our advocacy platform.
Can I just?
Councillor Gole, did you want to have a?
Just an extension on that. And this is through you, chair, to the CEO. This is where I get a little bit confused. So candidate from the I Like to Paint Party gets a list of advocacy stuff from us, a wish list, they've got no hope of winning, and yet we're investing all this time and effort, when the reality is, it's going to be someone who gets across the line from a major party, who still has to go out and get some type of acknowledgement from a minister to invest into this. I think it's just a waste of time doing this. You're presenting a wish list and putting officers to work to put a body of work together to bring to us to waste more time and money so we can get them into a room for a photo shoot and go, here's my wish list.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Gole.
Procedure motion, madam chair, if I could, I'd like to put the motion.
Yes, thank you. So.
The motion has to be put first. Is it the original?
All right, and now put the motion that's current, madam?
Oh, sorry, are we going with the procedural motion or are you just putting the motion? The procedural motion has to be voted on if we're going with that.
So you don't need a second?
Don't.
Okay, so I'll now put the procedural motion. So those in favour of the procedural motion?
To put.
So to put the motion?
Oh, yes.
To put the motion. So that's councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Rendles, councillor Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Hewlett, the motion is carried.
So now you've put the motion.
So now we put the motion. So those in favour of the motion before us, that's councillor Boglari, councillor Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes and Colley. The motion?
Happy to put the original motion as per the agenda now. Thank you, madam chair.
Okay, so the, so the motion is lost and the original motion is back before us?
I would like to put a further amendment.
So that motion was moved by councillor Talty, seconded by councillor Mackenzie?
So councillor Talty, would you like to talk to you?
Yeah, so councillor Talty, would you like to speak to the motion?
I might request that we ask an officer to speak to the points that are being raised in our advocacy document, and just to provide a general summary of those matters which we're putting forward through election advocacy as important to our city.
A point of order, ma'am, that I...
What is your point of order, councillor?
That I was putting forward an amendment, and I understand the amendment gets put, and then that becomes the motion.
We just had to get a second up. I speak to it, then you propose an amendment. Sorry, madam chair, you're cheering.
Thank you. So we now have a live motion?
Which is the office's?
Which is the, yeah, which is the original motion, the officer's recommendation. So councillor Rendles? Oh, sorry.
Thank you very, whoops, thank you very much, everything's gone black. That in respect to the list of priorities, I fully endorse those, that I would move an amendment that we put an 11th additional priority. As per, as per the wording in number 10, I would suggest the amendment read, local police services are maintained in line with population growth. The commitment that adequate police services be provided and or maintained in Redlands in light with substantial population growth and need.
We'll just need some advice on that, on whether that's going to be alternative or not. All right, so I've received some advice, so that proposed amendments outside the remit of the current motion before us, so we'll have to put this motion first. Oh, no.
If I can make a suggestion, madam chair?
So councillors, mayor, if I can assist?
Yes, sure.
So councillors, we had a motion that was lost. We're now going back to the original motion. What is being proposed is outside of the original motion, so you'll need to vote on this one, have your discussion for and against, vote on this one. If this one goes down, then you can look at an alternate motion that councillor Rendles has just said that he'd be putting up if this one is lost. So you need to debate the motion in front of you, which is the original officer motion.
Question, madam chair?
Yes, councillor Talty.
Would it be within keeping if we did a minor amendment and altered point 10, which says local health services maintained in line with population growth? Just alter the point 10 to say local health and policing services maintained? And just in that way, that might meet the desire while still keeping it within the current motion?
Because it goes on about private and public health.
Health and state government can be health and policing services, state government provision. There is no, there's nothing that says that every one of those dot points has to apply to every one of those. That's an acceptable, I would have thought, if we could get some advice. That's an acceptable, I would have thought, if we could get some advice.
I'll just seek some advice. All right, I've just received some further advice. So in relation to that proposed amendment, that's outside the scope of point ten. So we need to then debate or consider the live motion. And then if that doesn't, if that isn't successful, then we come back.
If I could ask a further question, Mayor. If the councillors' proposed amendment were withdrawn and this motion proceeds, can we either at a later day in this meeting or at the August meeting vote to add an eleventh point to the advocacy document?
I will take some further advice.
So councillors, this has been a little bit interesting. So thank you for that as acting CEO, I have enjoyed it. So we're keeping with the intent. So we're back to the original officer's motion that was moved by councillor Talty and seconded by councillor Mackenzie. And the discussion was the suggestion by councillor Rendles of an alternate motion or whether it can be amended. The advice that we've received from our governance and legal area is that we can, if you, if the mover is comfortable, which the mover has already said they are comfortable, on item one, it would be to endorse the twenty twenty four state election advocacy priorities as shown in attachment one as amended.
And what would the amended be?
And now we need to make that amendment.
Councillor Bishop.
Point of order, I believe that this is outside of the discussion topic. We've had workshops on this, we've had plenty of time to bring it to us for changes. The matter that I raised had been raised three times during workshops.
Correct.
With respect.
Correct.
So in relation to this, which is erroneous and outside of what I believe is standing orders, I think we should stick with the original.
Just a moment, we'll take a bit more advice.
I'll just take a comment.
Councillor Hewlett.
Police resources aren't made, decisions about police resources are not made by elected representatives. It's purely a job for the police commissioner. So you can, hey? So there's no point taking this to elected representatives because they have no decision making abilities.
All right, thank you councillor Hewlett. All right, upon further advice, all right, now we are back to the original motion. So we have to allow that to play out.
Do we not have, we have an amendment on the floor, don't we?
So.
Okay, I'm confused.
So deputy mayor, you moved the motion, it was seconded by councillor Mackenzie. There was discussion, could we, couldn't we, we're sticking with the original motion. And you'll now have your debate and then just.
Okay.
All right, so.
Rendles have to either press or withdraw his motion.
He didn't get a second up. Didn't, it didn't get a second up, it didn't.
Well, point of, point of order, a second wasn't called. There were decisions about whether it was within the scope. So it is either not within the scope, in which case I have the option of speaking against this motion.
Thank you councillor Rendles, just bear with me, thank you. Okay, so the advice that I've received is that. So, yeah, so officers deemed what you wanted not to be an amendment, so it didn't proceed. So if you want to make an amendment, it would have to occur now in this, after this one's played out. So you've got an opportunity to bring it back then if this doesn't progress. Okay? All right, so now we're back at the beginning. Councillor Talty, did you?
I just asked if you could have an officer to speak to the ten points that we are raising.
All right.
Good, please, that's.
Is there anyone available to, yes, thank you Natasha.
Thank you councillors. I guess I'll talk through the slide deck and take through them one by one. As was discussed at the workshop, there was some amendments following the input received from the workshop. So we've got Wyndham Creek Transport Connectivity. So this is looking for the comprehensive funding for a multi-level park and ride within the Wyndham Creek PDA. So related, I won't talk through all the whys, but that is the first ask that we're talking about. The second one is to do with the Brisbane Metro Network Extension. So this is about ongoing collaboration and a partnership with Brisbane City Council, but looking for that commitment to deliver business case and detailed designs for that extension to progress. And linked with the future bus interchange at Capalabo is also listed as a point in regards to that strategic partnership. The third priority is listed as the Redland Coast Islands. So this is a collaboration of a number of items around regional status recognition, which obviously links to funding opportunities for the islands and recognition of their current status. Coordination of the inter, an interagency working group, working with the state government of how we can address some of those challenges and opportunities at the island more effectively. Funding to support the Gumpi Master Plan implementation as well, looking for funding for that. And some low hanging fruit around the Translink smart ticketing to be introduced for Strobrooke and Kuchimudlo Islands. The fourth one to do with Tundaw Harbour. So this is a provision of the detailed plan and funding to upgrade the port infrastructure. So a focus on the infrastructure with that ask. I'm sure you're all aware of that need for that. Housing, number five, is about housing for vulnerable communities. Centred on the ask around the new foyer, a new youth foyer, which are being rolled out along the state. And we want Redlands to be considered to be part of that moving forward. But it's also broader around long-term emergency and crisis accommodation for those cohorts in our community that need that. Number six, we're looking for improved clarity of native title process. We try to be very clear with the words that we're using, that's about, you know, the process and the clarity of that. Noting there was discussions around that earlier. Point seven is the Wellington Street and Panorama Drive upgrade. So this is a specific ask around the eighty million dollars to deliver those to stages two and three concurrently to support, you know, effective use of taxpayers' dollars, but also project delivery to be done efficiently. Number eight, discussions around community residents. So that's the, in regards to planning, the current provisions for community residents in the planning regulation two thousand and seventeen, I'm sure councillors are all aware of. Number nine, again, was about strategic partnerships with state government to try and unlock and ensure utilisation of land and recreation facilities such as school halls and the like to work with us in partnership to support community use of such facilities. And number ten is centred around local health services being maintained in line with population growth. As we grow, we want commitments from the state government or an understanding about what they have planned to ensure that Redlands services are maintained.
All right, so any speakers against councillor Rendles?
Thank you, Mayor. In speaking against this motion, I'm not speaking against any of the ten items already being prepared. Rather, we are all cognisant of the issue of both crime and the perception of crime in the community. And it is, it is one of those key issues that many of my constituents raise, raise with me. Going through a couple of the comments that were made in the preceding discussion. Yes, we have had an opportunity to discuss this and no, it wasn't put up. But yes, earlier today in the emails that came around in the media, we saw another instance of an unconscious young woman being found around the back of Victoria Point. That I think, and it's certainly been raised with me in the last few days and indeed twice yesterday in my office on the islands about the issue of policing. That it is not just about policing. And as was raised in our initial motion, their very first mayor oil minute, that this is also about giving a message. It's giving a message to our community that all of us as councillors actually care about the safety of our residents, their personal safety, their property safety, and they shouldn't be living in fear. They shouldn't be too scared to walk down on the foreshore underneath the Redland Bay Hotel. They shouldn't be too scared to be walking back to the ferry from Moors Road when they're parking late. They shouldn't be too scared to be walking home, the young people walking home who are working evenings and particularly when it's dark early at the Redland Bay Village. Now, in terms of the state's capacity to whack, they do. It was only a week and a half ago that the state member organised over two dozen police to attend a meet to police, a coffee with a cop thing on Russell Island. This is why I'm moving against it because I think it is important for us as local councillors to give a clear expression to the Liberal Party, which they will factor into their political commitments, to the Labor Party, that they will factor into their commitments, and indeed any other political party, that we need more police, we need improved police response times, we need improved police presence in our community. And that is why I would urge you to support this motion against, or this, against, not vote for this motion.
Right, are there any other speakers for councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. Why should we do advocacy and support this? Well, we don't give up. It's because it's hard, just because sometimes people don't listen. We don't stop, we double down. And our advocacy, as we've tried to do, should get sharper, should get more focused and should be more realistic. And again, we've evolved and we're trying to do that. And this is another step in that, in that pathway each, each year. Some of the state candidates may turn out to be ministers, may indeed turn out to have great positions of power and that would be great. They're, just because we may not have had those that have been selected as ministerial standard in the past doesn't mean that can't happen in the future. And maybe, maybe our area will then get some of the services that it deserves. And some of that will be based on our advocacy documents here. So equally, it's on us to be advocates. And I certainly have been active already with any of the candidates that I'm aware of in keeping aligned with councils' majority advocacy. But of course, throwing in any of my own personal views as well. I'd like to note as well, four, at least four of the advocacy priorities relate to transportation. We are so poorly served for decades with public transportation, roads, the marine transport across the island straddie not linked to Translink. Four of them relate to transportation, one relates to better use of state-owned facilities, including perhaps some indoor facilities on, on the school land. School principals need to be supported in enabling their land and facilities to be unlocked to the community. That community that aren't just ratepayers, they're Queensland citizens and federal government, also Australian citizens. So councils and councillors are the greatest delivery partners that our state government has ever had or could ever wish to have. We are so much more efficient. So here, we're not really asking for anything special, we're just asking for a fair go for our community. Just a fair go. We're not looking for gold plating, we're just looking to say, hey, catch up and we'll work with you. You know, whichever colour shirt you're wearing once you're elected, we, we don't mind. We just want a fair go for our community and we're here to help. So for too long, we've been dismissed, ignored, and that's not just us. I'm saying us as our community and our advocacy documentation here. Yeah, maybe it's not going to be, you know, gold's not going to rain from the stars suddenly, I don't expect that. I just want a recognition from our state candidates and our state government, whoever that will be, that there are problems to solve, they are responsible alongside us and federal, and let's work together. We haven't had that, let's hope this time.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, any other speakers against? Any questions? I have some questions actually, hopefully. I just want to clarify with these points. The Wyndham Creek Transport Connectivity, does, does Amp have a position in relation to how much money? We've talked about comprehensive funding, we've been offered fifteen million so far. What, what exactly are we asking for?
Through you, CEO, through you, Mayor. In, in relation to specific money for that ask, I'd have to sort of take that on notice. But what we will be doing is workshopping with councillors in a couple of weeks, the actual specific content that's going out. So perhaps that's, you know, good insight for the, some of the discussions that's been had today. So these documents themselves as they are, is not what's proposed to be sent on and used as part of the communications plan. So details such as specific asks around money or elements, as you've discussed, of native title can be discussed with councillors at that workshop to be the content that goes out. This is not, it's not proposed that these packs be copied and posted out to, you know, potential electives as well. So there will be an opportunity for councillors to add into that content as well.
Okay, just so I understand the, sort of the broader nature of what we're trying to do. Because health services, and that's one that I, I sort of had concerns about. I know we're, we're looking for health services for, for our area. But I also was interested because of what's already been provided, what we're actually seeking. I sat in on a meeting in relation to maternity, maternity closure at a private hospital. But I was assured that that was actually covered by state government. I know we're a growing area, but our, our growth rate is, is low currently at point, I believe, point eight, zero point eight percent. So it is low. I acknowledge that we've had a satellite hospital with renal dialysis and chemotherapy facilities built relatively recently, that we've got a new ward opening or opened last year with twenty eight beds. We've got a new mental health facility opening next year. So I'm just wondering if we've given any thought, is this a general, is a general just push, just wanting more? Or do we have a targeted vision about we do, what we do need with the growth that we've got?
Through you, CEO, to the mayor, I mean, this item was discussed at the workshop and the, the feelings from that workshop was that councillors were happy to. and the feelings from that workshop was that councillors were happy to still pursue a general view of just ensuring that our services were maintained for community. There wasn't a specific ask around a particular health service, but obviously, council can choose what they want to do in terms of what's on the priority. But it was more about advocating for ensuring that the future growth was, you know, the services were provided for that future growth that's occurring.
All right, are there any other questions? No, in that case, I would, now we're on back to, Councilor Talty, would you like to sum up?
Just very briefly, Mayor. Although an extra matter's been raised, and you can argue over every one of these points, the point is that we need to make sure that those people who are going to election, whether they're already elected or about to be elected, understand the challenges that our community has in relation to matters that are primarily state-funded. Arguing that there are more points that could be included, like perhaps a policing point, doesn't negate the need for the other ten matters. So I would suggest that we vote for this now. I would also note that I personally have had a lot of conversations with our local police and our local policing education and community education crime officers, and the statistics are quite different to the perception. There's nothing preventing us as a council writing to the DG, or the minister, or the chief, asking for information or confirmation that there will be no reduction in policing in the Redlands additional to this. We can certainly ask the mayor through her office to just simply write a letter. We don't need to add it into this right now. So councillors, I'd suggest that you support these ten items because they're very important. If you've got other issues, we can pursue them. There are different ways to pursue them, they don't have to be in this pack. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Talty. So I will now put the motion, as it now appears on the screen. Those in favour are councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Those against? Councillor Gole, councillor Rendells. The motion is carried. All right, moving on to agenda item number fourteen point two, which is the twenty twenty four Local Government Association of Queensland motions. So councillors, I understand a motion's been distributed to you, and this is now displayed on the screen. Motion seeks to amend motion number three, oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, in the attachment, okay. The motion seeks to amend motion number three and endorse myself and deputy mayor Talty as official delegates with voting rights split equally. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Bishop, second up, councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just acknowledging that these are important motions to represent Redland City Council's views to the Local Government Association for debate at the annual conference on the twenty-first to the twenty-third of October. And there were a couple of matters that were discussed and raised, one of which was just some language around the mention of the fire and its cost shifting, and to make it, that we wanted to make it very clear that council was not supportive of the cost shifting. Rather, we want state government to assist us with managing that cost, because it is being shifted to councils, and it's appropriate to have that represented at the, at the meeting. So that's the reason for the amendment, and we're also further just clarifying that the mayor and deputy mayor will attend and speak, and that the, we're also clarifying the voting rights at the conference will be equally split between two official delegates, mayor and deputy mayor. Thank you.
No, in that case, I will put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, Rendells, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, acknowledging that councillor Mitchell is absent from the room, the motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number fifteen, which is reports from community services, fifteen point one, which is preliminary approval for material change of use for residential, retail, health and community uses involving a variation request to vary the effect of the city plan in accordance with the Botanics Plan of Development. Councillor Boglari?
Yes, thank you, councillor Hughes. Yeah, I'd like to move the alternate motion as circulated and on the screen. Was circulated.
Do I?
A couple of times.
Okay, that, that is now up on the screen. Do I have a second? Councillor Hughes? And once we're up, councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to your, to the motion?
Oh, yes, thank you. But before I begin, I, I need to thank the officers. I don't know where, they are in the room, so I'll look at you when I say thank you so much for your time and patience with me. I don't think it's been a year, but it certainly seems like a year that I've been getting updates and having meetings, discussing submissions, and the officers have been extremely patient and very knowledgeable, and I really appreciate that, and I need to, I need to have said that. I'd like to talk to the changing conditions that I'm proposing, the reasons why I'm including this, them, and the reasons why I'm not including perhaps some others, because there were other concerns raised in the submissions. Firstly, the location of this application is currently zoned low-density residential. According to the city plan, this location, location zones as such is for growth and change through a mix of lot sizes and housing forms, and this application certainly does achieve that. Medium-rise development should be closer to principal centres, not in the LDR. However, medium-rise development is included in this application. The LDR should accommodate attractive streetscape, walking and cycling access and recreational demands. This proposal, I believe, includes that. Lot sizes should not be below four hundred square metres. This development has reduced lot size. Shops, offices, food and drink outlets should not be established in LDR. This proposal does include this use. So this is the challenge for councillors. We've got an application before us, and we need to decide, it's outside the city plan, so we need to consider are the community outcomes, the benefits that the community will receive from this development, do they outweigh the fact that it isn't compliant with the city plan? Councillors also need to take into account that there is an existing residential subdivision on the land with existing approvals, and some of them are tree clearing. So there's some trees we can't save because they've already got permission in a previous application, though that was in accordance with the LDR zone. There's also a destination restaurant marketplace established directly to the east, which does have food and drink outlet in it. This proposal, unlike other subdivisions where we actually get the layout of the houses, et cetera, is to change the zoning of this location into three precincts and one sub-precinct with the various new land uses. Therefore, it is not going to be achieved through the city plan, but is being proposed through a Botanics Plan of Development, which we call a POD. So at the western portion of the site, near Pitt Road, the area is proposed to be zoned recreational and open space precinct. There were concerns in submissions for this, in this area, about mature koala trees and a known koala population that uses it. Hundred and sixty-nine koala sightings have happened in the last couple of years, and there's also a dam. This existing dam is an old farm dam from around, we think, the nineteen nineties. The assessing officers investigated this area and found the dam is prone to semi-regular algae blooms, and it's got extremely poor water quality. But it is part of a larger wetland area to the west. The wetland area to the west is conservation, therefore, it would be a safe haven for any fauna which might be to be relocated. Anytime I've been there, it's been minimal bird life, a few ducks. That area is within thirty metres. The structural integrity is unknown of the dam, and there's also safety concerns with having it next to the park. And it is proposed to be, to fill in the dam and replant the area with koala food trees, which will strengthen the existing known koala environmental corridor in the area and that existing koala population which has been in the submissions. Another concern raised was if the dam was filled, the existing trees would suffer, and therefore watering has been a condition now of the proposal to mitigate this impact during the transitional stage, and also our arborist field, the species of trees that they are, can cope with this degree of change. The area now in a condition is proposed to be zoned conservation purpose, whereas before it was zoned open space. So this is a plus for the environmental corridor in that area. The Koala Action Group submission expressed a concern for a number of trees across the site, and council has listened to this. The dam planting will increase vegetation on the site and will be some mitigation for the loss of trees in other areas. Also...
Councillor Boglari, just letting you know, you've got a minute to go.
I've got a lot more. I'd, I'd, I'd seek indulgence to go through this because it is a, a development which will change the face of Wellington Point, and I'm trying to express the positives and negatives.
Excellent, thank you. Can I just get a general indication of support to continue? We can just, we can just continue? Yes, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, fellow councillors. Council, through negotiation, realigned the internal boulevard road, so that there will also be increased vegetation along Nelson Road frontage, so therefore, we've taken those trees into account as they will now be retained. Also, the road realignment to the north of the dam is now proposed to be a T3 neighbourhood park, so with amendments to limit the edge effects on this retained vegetation. There was actually a dwelling reduction in the initial proposal to accommodate this extra park, and again, more trees now will be saved in this area. Council has also not conditioned a footpath around the corner of Nelson and Pitt Road, but rather a linking path from Nelson through to the park, through to Pitt, so that it retain, retains the footpath trees. If a footpath was conditioned like we normally do, it would have damaged further trees. So we have done several mitigating conditions in that area to protect trees. This area, once planted, will support the corridor, as I said, and some of the trees which were under concern are actually trees that we've planted over the last decade on the Northern Greenway, so they are protected anyway. And it's very satisfying to see in the koala mapping that was done, the number of koalas that are using that area. There was also a flooding issue at this intersection, which councillor Hughes and Bishop also know, because we share this, this corner. However, the flood mapping shows this proposed development will not substantially increase this flooding, and the main reason for the flooding in this area is the poor water movement through that swamp and wetlands that I previously mentioned, and this restricts the floodwater from escaping. This motion now actually addresses this because the purpose of the flood and storm tide hazard overlay is to ensure that risk to life, property or environment is mitigated to an acceptable or tolerable level, and now we have got under PO one-two that the development contributes to effective and efficient disaster management response and recovery capabilities by including electronic sign to, to be installed. The main solution for the flooding is actually to have the road raised, and I spoke to the planners who advised, as this is an existing flooding concern, not caused by this proposal, it is not acceptable as a condition for this development, though I would hope that some of the infrastructure charges collected might somehow find their way, as I'm sure councillor Bishop and Hughes do, to this corner. So that's that, that bottom zoning. The middle zone is low-density residential, and it is proposed will provide approximately a hundred and forty-two townhouses and nineteen detached dwellings in Sub Precinct One. Presently, it has been identified, and the state government is pressuring local councils for greater housing diversity and affordability. This is also the case in Redlands, plus there is a widely acknowledged there is a housing crisis. The draft Redland Housing Strategy states the expected increase in population in this area will result in a need for four hundred and seventeen units by two thousand and forty-one, with a shift in household structure and demographics signaling the need for different housing choices. In my opinion, houses in this proposal will not actually be affordable, because a three-bedroom low-set brick home right next door just sold for one point three million. However, however, the applicant states there is a need for housing diversity, and that's what we agree with, and this proposal certainly does accommodate different housing designs. There are townhouses with a minimum lot size of a hundred and twenty metre square, dwelling houses from three hundred to eight hundred, and that delivers a range of options all in this one precinct. Though some of these designs may be different for Redlands, this development is actually answering what the state government and the South East Queensland Regional Plan are requesting, and it is pretty much contained, this development, and it only has direct residential neighbours to the south across Nelson Road. And to mitigate the impacts on these neighbours, the setbacks from Nelson Road are six metres for amenity from the street and these neighbours to reduce any perceived impact. The multiple dwellings are along the northern boundary of this proposal, and they are separated by those existing residents by the Northern Greenway, which would be about forty or fifty metres wide, and these lots also have a four-metre setback from that Northern Greenway. There is also private open space in this area for new residents, and the boulevard is an extended width with indented car parking. So the main road is eighteen metres, which will also give a sense of space in this actual area. So with this diverse range of dwelling houses, this application is consistent with the South East Queensland Regional Plan intent and emerging planning policy to make efficient use of land. One of the reasons stated in favour of the proposed development is the need for housing. I have also included in the motion that due to this perceived need and the housing crisis, that the timeframe to commence be reduced from fifteen years to ten years, to address this need for diversity and take pressure off other areas such as greenfield sites. If we allow this diversity and density in this area being a constrained site, we have infrastructure already in place, so it's actually a cheaper development for council going forward, and we are grappling at the moment with large greenfield sites being opened up and the cost of infrastructure there. Under the State Planning Act, otherwise stated in a development application, it would actually be five years before the approval would need to start, so we're actually doubling the time under the State Planning Act. I was thinking five years might be good because it would address the need even more urgently, but due to the size of the proposal, I have been advised by the planners that five years would be difficult to achieve. However, I do believe fifteen years is just too extended for the proposal to start, so I am in the motion, asking the condition to be changed to ten years. The last precinct is the area along Main Road, the corner of Main Road and Nelson Road. The last precinct is the area along Main Road, the corner of Main Road and Nelson Road. The land uses include multiple dwelling, residential care facility, retirement facility, any combo there. These uses are proposed to all be code accessible if height does not exceed five stories. The officers' recommendation is three stories, whereas this motion, um, is taking it back up to the five stories asked for by the, um, applicant because I have also asked for a setback. Whereas at the moment, it's only three metres from the road, I'm asking for a six metre setback, which I think would mitigate any impact. At present, though, all these, um, land uses are impact accessible as they're not included in the, um, city plan at the moment. In this new proposed zone, there is also four thousand metres square of non-residential land uses. This includes a hospital, healthcare, community use, which could be outdoor dining, cultural and events area, food and drink outlets, indoor sport and recreation, offices, shop or bar. Again, all, all out of the planning scheme, which is why they have to have a new zoning with, um, the new uses. But each new use has a constraint as to the size or number. Though the economic impact study, um, and council's own peer review of the study concludes there wouldn't be sufficient negative impact on existing villages of Wellington Point and to the south horizons, I have justifiable concerns. The impacts listed on Horizons are eleven point three percent and Wellington Point Village is twelve point three percent on average. On average means out of the number of, um, shops there are down there, if you divide it all, it comes to twelve, which means some of them are probably twenty, while others would be none because a real estate agent wouldn't be impacted. This greatly concerns me. There are also lesser impacts on Berkdale, Alex Hills and even Cleveland was mentioned to have a, be impacted. Now, previously mentioned, I said there is a restaurant market already approved east of the site and I understand, talking to planners, that for the development with an expected increase in population of seven hundred, it could be expected that there could be a small retail component. So my motion is to vary the requested G F A by a very minor reduction to decrease this impact to some extent. The shops at present have seven hundred and fifty square metres. I'm asking that to be reduced to five hundred square metres. This would allow a convenient shop and two, at least two to three smaller shops. Food and drink is seven hundred and fifty. I'm asking this to be reduced to five hundred square metres. This would allow a cafe, perhaps the size of Teniers for the visual with another couple of smaller food and drink. Office, gym, hospital, healthcare and bar remain unchanged.
councillor Boglari, I'll just let you know you're at fifteen minutes.
Oh gosh, sorry. My main concern is that even with an economic study, I know the, I know the traders, I know how they're struggling. They were struggling before Covid and we were trying to work out ways we could help them through economic development. They've struggled since Covid and many have not built up. They actually need this influx of residents to help them, not to be shared, but to actually help them build up. I know the resident, I know the, um, shopkeepers in Horizons, um, are the same. Twenty years ago, Vicky Point was built. It impacted Cleveland. Cleveland's never come back up again. Many of these businesses are local families and they actually support our own sporting groups and our community. They employ local and I'm really asking today that we support them. Another concern in this area is the car parking. There was a relaxation on car parking. I don't think one councillor here doesn't know about the car parking issues across the city. So I'm asking that that goes back to the existing city plan. I'm also asking if we're going to go back to the five stories, that we ask for a six metre setback as a buffer along Main Road and that this be de-planted as a visual buffer because this will cause a big stir in that area. It is so out of character and we are supposed to keep in with the character of the area. However, we also have to deliver diversity and higher density in some areas. So I'm asking for a compromise there and that we have the six metre buffer setback so that it can be planted out. I know that some councillors are concerned about, um, going to court. I believe that there's always a risk whenever we make a change to a proposed development application may end up in court. However, to not strive for best community outcomes, but rather make a decision due to an unknown fear, I don't think is acceptable. There was a service station on Fanuken Road which was inconsistent with the zoning and that it was also going to have a detrimental impact through traffic on the surrounding area. We refused that one and that was fine. I haven't even mentioned the traffic issues here yet, but there, there are traffic issues which I think the officers have dealt with as best they can. And recently in May this year, council refused a proposal on School of Arts Road as it would have a detrimental impact on other centres and delay shoreline. Given these reasons were justified for this refusal, they're the same as this one and that's why I'm asking, can, all I'm asking for is simply to, to mitigate this impact and reduce it. Just as an interesting side note, the actual applicant for this has joined with council um, in that court appeal against the School of Arts application. And I can only presume it might be because they're concerned, um, about the impact on theirs.
councillor Boglari, can I just get you to make final points?
I encourage all councillors to support this change in the motion. I hopefully, I've explained that we have looked through all the submissions, um, addressing the environmental, addressing the traffic with changing in the internal roads, changing with a left-in, left-out, changing with a roundabout. We've addressed the need for the South East Queensland Regional Plan. All I'm asking for is that slight compromise on the size of the commercial area to support our local family businesses. Thank you for that time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Speaker is against councillor Talty.
Uh, thank you mayor, uh, and thank you councillor Boglari. That was a very detailed explanation. Uh, we have before us an alternate, uh, motion to the one put by officers, which includes many, many changed conditions. Uh, I would like, if I can, to speak to, uh, some of those changed conditions. The councillor has just said she wants to make a minor change to the commercial areas. The change being proposed is a thirty percent change. That's not in my consideration minor. We also know from past experience that we don't have success in today's market with corner stores. That is old thinking. It was in the two thousand and six planning scheme and without exception, those areas that were zoned that have come back and asked for variations and changes because it doesn't work. So there is a reason that they have asked for fifteen hundred square metres across those two areas and I would not support that as a change. Uh, I do support most of what councillor Boglari has asked for and I will be asking a question of officers, um, at the end of this. If I can, I am happy to support the proposals to, um, I'm not too sure about the type change in time limit, but I don't think that's a major issue. I think it just means that should they not complete it within ten years, they can come back and make their, uh, arguments as to why. It is not a, as councillor Boglari did, perhaps, I'm not sure if she misspoke, um, it's not about commencing, it's about completing. Oh, sorry, I mean, it's not about completing, it's about commencing. Yeah. Yeah, so you just said it backwards when you were talking to it. Um, yeah, uh, the, um, the height, very happy to support the five stories. I think from a livability and, um, uh, community aspect, having, having a higher height and then a better setback and, and a little bit more space for people to manoeuvre around the sites is, is a good outcome. So happy to support that. Uh, happy to support the return to the parking. I understand there has to be detailed, um, applications put in following this preliminary, um, approval and any variations to parking will be argued out at that point. So that's not an issue for me here. Uh, the setbacks and, um, and landscaping and so forth, uh, I think is, is fully, um, acceptable. I would like to ask, uh, if I can through you, mayor, it was mentioned that, uh, proposals had, or suggestions that had been put by councillors concerned with flooding and nearby intersections and so forth, were not within the reg, regulatory framework for planning. There's a, there's a point here suggested that electronic flooding signs should be provided by the applicant. My understanding, uh, within planning regulation is, I, I doubt that would be a reasonable requirement under the act. So I would like to ask that officers speak to that. And generally speaking, uh, if the reduction in commercial and food and drink outlets was returned to the two lots of seven hundred and fifty, then I would be happy to support these, um, this, this motion as it stands. But at the moment, uh, don't support the reduction in commercial and, uh, food and drink outlets. Uh, I don't think that changing this will change the outcomes for shops several kilometres away, uh, and this will meet the needs of the local community better. So if you could, madam chair, if you would just ask officers to speak to that flooding signage matter, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Talty. Do we have someone present who can speak to that matter? Thank you.
Good morning, ma'am. Good morning councillors. Uh, just in response to that point, um, as with any planning decision, we have to consider whether applying a condition, whether it's, uh, reasonable and relevantly required. So, um, as per officers' recommendation, the, um, flood report modelling doesn't suggest that the, there'll be an increase in, in flooding as a result of this development. However, there will be an increase in population and people within that vicinity. So, um, on that basis, um, you know, for councillors to consider whether they think that is a reasonable or relevant condition to apply under those circumstances.
But the, it, the flooding signage will be well outside of the development? Oh, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So councillor Boglari, did you have?
I was just thinking while the officer was there, they might have been able to just explain, clarify, councillor Talty mentioned fifteen hundred square metres. No shop can be that large, so. Oh, sorry, I thought you meant one shop.
Councillor Bishop.
Yeah, just in, in speaking for, uh, just note that majority of councillor, um, Talty's, uh, response was actually in support of, and I think, uh, kudos to councillor Boglari for piecing together the various concerns that councillors have raised in discussions because this is a plan of development. It is a variance and a change from our city plan and I think the work that's been done by councillor Boglari and listening to everyone's concerns to try and have as much clarity and alignment with city plan, which is what we need to tie ourselves to, uh, as a defensible course for our justification is very important. And that touches on the parking matters, uh, setbacks and, and some other issues that I'll touch on in a minute. But generally, I just want to say that the diversity of what is proposed, um, and the consultation that's taken place by the developers has been significant. Uh, we are also in a planning environment where we have the South East Queensland Regional Plan, which is proposing some significant changes to our city, uh, housing strategy, which is still up in the air. There's a lot of planning uncertainty around and I think that's all the more reason why we need to tie it to our existing policies so we can defend ourselves and our grounds. Coming back to councillor Talty's point about the, uh, commercial and, and councillor Boglari's intention with reducing the amount of commercial, I think it's very important that we look at a limited scope and understand that they've applied for as much as they have. But I think we need to try to curtail as much as we can, um, what is proposed here. And the reason I say that specifically is we have not yet completed a, a review of our centres design strategy, um, a centres review strategy. That's a critical piece of work that should give us guidance as a city about where, um, commercial development is to take place across our city. And in the absence of that, which I and others have been asking for, for some time, I understand it will be coming with our city, uh, city plan review documents, but I would prefer that we are cautious on this matter. And if it's the one sticking point, councillor Talty, uh, but generally you're in support, I would encourage that we support this motion as it's proposed and that we try to look at a reduction. If the developer is aggrieved or concerned and wants to prosecute that down the path, they can do that. Um, but I think it's important that we try and set the parameters so that we support, acknowledging that Horizons exists, that Wellington Point is nearby and that there could be some impacts. I very much want to, want to acknowledge that a reduction in the two areas that are proposed, not across all of the commercial, other commercial in the area won't be changed, but, but the two that have been proposed, I think that reduction is defensible and I would speak in support of this amendment as it's proposed. Also, just want to acknowledge that traffic will be flowing through the area. Uh, most of this traffic will go, I'm concerned about that left-in, left-out, understand that's going to be important, but there's a lot of traffic that will go through Pitt Road and the flashing signs, I think is defensible, is important as a, as an awareness thing. If, if nothing else, that area does flash flood, it is a concern and those cars will proceed mostly up Collingwood Road and then along Berkdale Road and that concerning crossing and roundabout, uh, rocket, ricket, um, sorry quarry, Berkdale Road is still a concern. There will be much more volumes of traffic through there and I urge our traffic study to pick up the importance of prioritising that corridor and raising it up for, uh, higher service expectations in terms of, um, our advocacy for getting that to be fast-tracked for, um, uh, signalisation and also widening in partnership with Brisbane City Council. Um, but I support this recommendation, this, this amended motion.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Council, just for, so speaker against councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, mayor. I'm speaking against, uh, similarly, this probably on a fairly narrow basis, but I'd like to note that councillor Boglari spoke glowingly on the improvements, the changes that have been done through cooperation over a year. It's been a year that, uh, the, the applicants and officers and obviously councillor Boglari have been working through things. And, and that's great that there, um, has been a very good development coming before us that recognises all those matters that we're very aware of, shaping S E Q, economic planning needs, the draft housing strategy, um, and the existing approvals. So it's really important to note that the changes that have been made, the development that you see before us, has been through a year of cooperative negotiation. So to have this, these new changes come essentially for us at the, at late in the day, at the eleventh hour, is not in the spirit of what I would have said would have been the negotiations to date. Despite that, it's only on a fairly narrow basis that I think we would show that it might be unreasonable and not relevantly required. And that is on the commercial floor space. I have spoken to traders at Wellington, so I'm very aware, but it will not be defensible in my opinion, based on the expert opinions and the peer review to suggest that a reduction is either reasonable or relevantly required. So strong opinions is one thing, but a court will look at the facts and peer-reviewed expert facts. So that's the only element of this that I would argue against. I think, I, I support looking at the parking rates. Um, if setbacks are important to people, that's fine. I'm not going to argue against any of the others, but I think it is unreasonable for councillors to think that just because it might be a, a strong opinion, a personal opinion, that the court won't look at that. They will look at the expert reviews which are before us. And it's two, it's a peer. And it's two. It's a peer review of the expert opinion, so that's the only one. So I can't support this as it is, because I think for the sustainability of this new and livable community, which I think is going to be a great place to live, I don't think it is fair, reasonable, or reasonable to reduce the commercial area. The rest I'd happily go through, but I'm not sure whether the move, the motion, would consider removing any of those at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Any other speakers for? Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Really appreciate your leadership for your community, our community. It's so important, and the officers' support. The changes that we have proposed through this amendment seek for a much better outcome, and I support those. I am seeking from officers, if we could, some clarity, where I'm hearing the concerns about the floor space for the retail, if we could have some clarity on what's proposed, what councillor Boglari's amendment would be, what that actually will be on the ground, and if we can talk to those points. If we need to move an amendment, further amendment, to just take that one point out, if we need to get that across the line, I'm happy to have further conversation on that. But overall, I've spoken to my residents that are across the road. They understand change. They are supportive of the work that the developer has put out. I have only had maybe one or two concerns. Overall, literally overwhelming support for that change. So just seeking that clarity on the floor space for the commercial. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Hughes, so I understand you had almost two questions. One on clarity of the floor space and if the mover would consider...
Following that, and following the rest of the debate, if we need to discuss any further. I'm happy to help with that.
All right. Thank you. Do we have an officer available to address councillor Hughes's questions? Thank you.
Okay, so if I can just run through the alternate motion that's proposed. So it's item two, so point C. So in the urban village precinct code, in the pod that is currently proposed, there's a GFA or gross floor area for shops to be limited to 750 metres square. So what's being proposed is reducing that by 250 to 500 metres square. Also, in the pod, there's the same restriction to the gross floor area for food and drink outlets. So again, what's being proposed is reducing that from 750 in the current pod to 500 metres square. Roman numeral three is, in the current pod, as proposed, there's a limit, a maximum limit of 400 metres square per tenancy. So in the revised or alternate motion, that's proposed to be deleted. And then... Because the GFA's obviously gone down to 500 square metres, yeah. Now, point, Roman numeral five, AO 8.1, again, that talks about GFA for shops limited to 500 metres square. Again, as originally proposed, 750. So it's just amending the relevant provisions in the pod, basically to reflect those reduced gross floor areas. AO 8.2 is again to reduce that to 500 metres square. And as above, AA, AO 8.5 would be reinstated to put that maximum limit of 400 metres square per tenancy. And that's that. There is also a change, and if I take you to point one A, there's a condition six B, which identifies a maximum GFA of 4,000 metres square currently. Because obviously those retail and food and drink tenancies are reduced by 500 metres square total, that would come down to 3,500 metres square. So essentially, it's a reduction in 500 metres square GFA.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Hughes.
Thank you. Michael, I appreciate that. The 750 down to 500, 750 down to 500, 4,000 down to 3,500. Over what amount? So is that 750 total? Or is that each shop? I'm lost. I'm really struggling here to follow this. And the 400 metres square tenancy deleted, and then you said then it comes back. Do we have any drawings or anything? It's a total. Yeah, it's a picture. Yeah. Yeah, I saw that. But what have we got? What does that look like? Do we know?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. If I can provide some clarification for you. Do you remember this is a preliminary approval to vary the effect of the planning scheme? So what it's seeking to do is set up its, I'll call it like a mini kind of assessment framework for future development applications. So there's a plan of development. So within that, there's precinct codes, which contain performance outcomes and acceptable outcomes. So what we're kind of seeking, what this preliminary approval is seeking to achieve is an overall GFA of non-residential floor space. So there's limits, as we've talked about through the presentation, through the workshops, about the GFA associated with each type of use. So as I ran through before, I said there was changes to AO 1.1. And what I'm referring to there is AO 1.1 of the plan of development. So as currently stated, it says that the total gross floor area of shop, so that's a use, any use as a shop in the plan area is limited to 750 metres square. So there could be more than one tenancy as a shop at 750 square metres, but it can't exceed that within the acceptable outcome. So what is being proposed now by the alternate motion is reducing that figure from 750 to 500. Now, then I went on to, if you recall, I said about the Roman numeral three and deleting AO 1.5. So again, if I look at AO 1.5, what that says in the pod currently is that the gross floor area of an individual shop, so remember a shop is a use, so there could be more than one shop up to 750 GFA square metres. What AO 1.5 is saying, that the gross floor area of an individual shop and food and drink outlet tenancy, so an individual tenancy in the plan area, is limited to 400 metres square. So there can't be an individual tenancy greater than 400 metres square to comply with the acceptable outcome.
Thank you. So any speakers against? Councillor Rendles.
Once again, Wendy, thank you very much for your very detailed and erudite overview of the development. It's certainly helped make it a lot clearer in my mind. My areas of concern and what brings me to speaker against it is the restriction on the commercial spaces. There's, you know, no solid information presented in respect to the rationale for that. It's anecdotal. It's opinion-based evidence, or it's opinion on what may be the impact on other areas. One may offer a counter opinion. My experience in management advisory and consulting work is that often when you bring in additional areas such as this, and particularly given the, you know, though it's small, there is a historical and place-based, it's a landmark, that development. I think that and the events will bring additional groups of people into the area who are additional to those residing there. So one may equally argue that when you start getting those concentrations, the place itself becomes a destination that people go through, and it could have a net gain to all businesses. I mean, that's an opinion. It's not, I'm not positing any evidence in support of that. But I don't think we should make these decisions based on, you know, what our gut feeling is, particularly when it's running counter to officers' advice.
Thank you, councillor Rendles. I'll just be, I'll just, I'll move to questions. I'm just taking. Speaker four? All right, now we'll move to questions. Councillor Gollay.
Thanks, Chair. Through you to councillor Boglari. First of all, thank you, Wendy, for the detail that you've gone to over time. It's actually unusual to see you supporting a development of this size. So I'm really impressed by the work you've done. Just so that I'm geographically placed, though, are we talking about the site across from the farm? The existing farm? So there is a grocery store there and a restaurant that's packed. Yeah, it's packed, though. That restaurant, good luck getting a seat, you know. It's pretty full-on. So this is where I'm trying to understand that if we're talking about the possibility of reducing people going to the Wellington Point Village or the other set of shops on the other corner, isn't that kind of already happening from a food and drink sort of restaurant or groceries aspect anyway? It's already there. Yeah. And then the other concern I have, and it's always the, yeah, it's in the woodshed for me, this getting rid of dams. I've spoken to Fatini. When I say Fatini, I've spoken to Vaughan, and it's actually not them coming to us saying, "We want to get rid of that water body." It's always council saying, "We don't want to maintain that water body. Get rid of it." And it's always the same report. "The water quality's not good. There's an algae bloom. There's something, you know, the sky's falling in some way." These dams and wetlands set up an ecosystem over time.
Councillor Gollay, I just, is there a question?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to get the question there. One, there's already, it's already been answered. There's already a retail outlet there with a shopping centre, and I'm geographically placed now. Two is, why do we have this insistence on backfilling in freshwater wetlands and getting rid of dams, thinking we're going to fix it by planting trees or turning it into a mess of a retention basin? Most of these retention basins that we see around the area after they've got a bit of a dam is a rubbish-filled, overgrown thing. It's an absolute mess compared to what was originally there.
So councillor Gollay, is there a question in relation to this report, or is that a...
Yeah, so why are we getting rid of the dam?
Okay, so this...
And is that not going to create an issue across the road for the farm?
Okay, so if I, I'll afford councillor Boglari an opportunity to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number one, surprised to see me supporting development of this kind. I'll support anything that I believe has sufficient outcomes. Usually, I have objections based on some sort of factual data. My objection in this one is what I've listed and I've addressed in this motion. And I'm not prepared to alter any of that, or I won't be supporting this, because I don't feel... Yes, we're going to get diversity, but this whole development is against the city plan. No, for other reasons, but that's different to today's talk. But if we can get these in, then I believe through negotiation, and I think, like, I'll say it again, the officers have done a superb job here to get to this point. If we can get these done, then I am prepared to believe that the outcomes have outweighed the fact that it's different to the city plan. Okay, so that's the first thing that was mentioned. The commercial side across the road, I mentioned that. And I mentioned that to say there has been a precedent set. There is a cafe and a marketplace across the road. It isn't groceries, though. You can't buy toilet paper or dog food over there. It's more a market with yogurt and some fruit and veg, yes. So it's different to this. The commercial, which I'm asking this to be, the commercial that I'm asking this to be reduced to is still, what is it, 1,000? What is, it's gone down from 1,500 only to 1,000? It's the same, it's the same, it's the same size. It's the same size as across the road. What is across the road is still allowed on this site. It's still that size. So 700, it was 750 for shops, 750 for food. I'm just saying both to be reduced to 1,000, which is a thousand... Which is 500 each, sorry. Yeah, which is the 1,000 all up. So that would equal what's across the road. So I've addressed that. That has impacted. I know one coffee shop who has been now having to open longer hours due to the impact of when that was approved. So I know the impacts that are happening. It might be in an economic study that it doesn't, but there's proof it has. My own shop at Ormiston, we sold it. Quick as when council 20-something years ago approved Horizons. It was out of sequence and on rural, and councils owned it. And that shop at Ormiston has been shut now since 2019. So it's not a gut feeling I have. There is the proven facts in that area. As for the dam, I'll fight for a dam as well. Like, I know you did down in Thornlands. Dams do have ecosystems, and they are valuable. But this dam in particular, I've been walking past it for over 15 years now. I've never seen much wildlife in there. It isn't actually connected to the wetlands. There's actually a road between it. And the outcome of having it filled and re-vegetated with Koala food trees, I think, is a better environmental outcome than what is there now. I think the environment would say, "Thank you." Because the wetland is across the road. So I hope that answers those three questions.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Councillor Gollay, did you want an officer to answer the, to make comment in relation to that dam question?
Sorry, Chair. Yeah. See, councillor Boglari, you promoted the farm shop across the road. It was actually another one of your missions to help that gentleman get his shop and everything up and running.
Councillor Gollay, is there a question? Because that's...
No, I'm just trying to understand the argument to reduce, to reduce one lot of commercial side of things because of shop impacts, but the same...
Thank you, councillor Gollay.
Councillor promoted the business across the road.
Thank you, councillor Gollay. Well, stick to standing, stick to standing orders and we'll...
No, thanks, ma'am.
Stay on questions. Do we have any more questions? Councillor Mackenzie.
I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion to remove the conditions to reduce the commercial area based on, based on commentary that we had in the workshop, what we've had today, information back from officers regarding the reports that were provided, that were peer-reviewed. And I believe that if we try to reduce that commercial area, it will be challenged by the applicant because the reports indicate that they had, they actually included a larger catchment in their report than what was required. So I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion.
Thank you, councillor Mackenzie. I understand that's a substantial change to that amendment. So I'll just get some advice. Okay, so I've got a couple of questions. No, you've answered that question. All right. So the advice is that we have to deal with, we have to deal with this motion first?
I have clarity on that, please. My understanding was that to do an amendment, it can't change the intent of the original motion. The original motion is still to approve it, but just to change that...
To prove it with conditions.
To approve it with conditions.
This is an alternate motion?
No.
So...
This is a variation to the conditions. So the motion in front of us is to approve it with conditions, and then there is a list of altered conditions. We are still, councillor is still proposing to approve it with conditions.
Just going to get some governance advice from Andrew, yes.
I can read the...
I can read the, the section under the standard or, standing orders that talks about amendments to motions. That will help-
What number, please?
So we're at clause seven point four point two. And it states, where an amendment to a motion is before a meeting, no other amendment to the motion can be considered until after the first amendment has been put. The amended, so if there's a proposal, let, let me go on. The amended motion with the proposers, with the proposers' approval may have some minor changes to words to ensure that its intent is better understood without changing the meaning of the amended motion. So the question is whether that change, well, that's a question for councillors to consider. So by deleting the reference to the GFA, the question is whether that keeps, whether you consider that to minor change to simply to change in the words and its intent is better understood.
The councillor called it a slight change?
As I say, it's a decision for the councillors to consider whether that change is a minor change, so it's better understood.
Well, I don't, I, I guess it's, it's a, it's a deletion, so it's not, if the wording of seven, if, if the wording of, of that particular standing order, some minor changes to words to ensure that its intent is better understood, removing a section really isn't providing clarity, it's actually removal, so I would not consider that a minor change.
So if it's not a minor change, you have to consider this motion first and then-
I sought, I sought advice from the planning officers with regard to the changes for conditions and nobody suggested this wasn't in line.
It's a different, sorry, it's a different test. The officers that we're talking at, changes to conditions in respect to the Planning Act, this is under the standing order, whether this change by deleting the, the GFA is a minor change or not. You're actually changing a section by deleting a component entirely.
Can I, through you ma'am, can I please seek clarity on seven point four point three then, please? Would it, would, would I be proposing amendment by another motion? So would we need to suspend the meeting for council officers to delete that and that would become a new motion?
The general practice is if it's not a minor change, you would vote on the motion as put before you and if that goes down, then you can propose the amendment, the, all of this except for the change to the GFA. So, so the process is if, yeah, okay.
All right. While we're scrolling, Councilor Hewlett, you had a question?
Thank you ma'am. The decision to reduce the GFA, which obviously Councilor Boglari is supporting, was that a suggestion? Does that size a suggestion from the officers or is it just something you arbitrarily decided on? Arbitrarily, sorry, thank you.
After discussion and I, we, we sat, I sought advice on how much commercial would still be allowed there with that and it's equal to what is across the road.
Yeah, but I'm just concerned that, that it's not, it's not across the road, it's in a difference. I know where it is. I just don't understand where you pulled that number out, that's all.
Because when we, oh, if I may through the Chair, because when I was looking at the size, as I've written somewhere, five hundred allows you a small grocery shop like the Burke Dahl IGA and at least two to three other shops. That is more than sufficient shops to cater for the needs of that seven hundred plus surrounding areas. And even at that amount, it will take from the village. Food and drink is five hundred. And when I look at the size of shops in other areas, they're about seventy square metres. So this is five hundred square metres. So that is more than sufficient food and drink for, for that, that area, to cater for that area.
You're referring to dependencies though, aren't you, when you say seventy square metres, that's a ten.
Yeah, yes, but all up is five hundred. So you can get ten fifties or you could get a group of seventy and a couple of fifties.
Or if they want to put a tavern there or something.
Yeah, well, I have not touched the tavern. The tavern is on top of this. The ta, the bar, which they're allowing, I haven't touched, that is actually allowing up to sixty people at a bar. The healthcare offices is still eight hundred and fifty, so you've still got those offices or for healthcare, you've still got the hospital at a thousand square metres untouched. You've still got a gym allowed, up to four hundred square metres. You've still got normal offices for your, I don't know, accountants or solicitors. That is three fifty, I've remained that at three fifty. All those other uses, your office, your gym, your hospital, your healthcare associated practitioners and your bar is all unchanged, so it is still a very big area.
So you've spoken to the developer and they're not willing to?
I have not spoken to the developer, that would have been inappropriate.
Thank you, all right.
Well, we're not allowed to meet with the developers once an application is within council.
Thank you. Chair, Deputy Mayor Tolty, do you have a question?
Thank you, I just want to have a, a question through you if I can, Madam Chair. The resolution before us says to issue a preliminary approval for a material change of use, residential, retail, health and community uses, application, land description, et cetera, et cetera. And then, subject to the conditions outlined in attachment eleven as amended by council, that is the motion. And so if that is an amendment and we are proposing, or a councillor has suggested an amendment, as far as I can see, that is within the standing orders. And if I can just clarify my understanding of the question that was just asked by Councilor Hewlett, there is no scientific basis for the reduction from seven hundred and fifty to five hundred over those two areas. That is purely arbitrary and it is just an opinion. And there's been no evidence based, and I did speak with officers about this condition and it is not their recommendation to reduce that from seven hundred and fifty to five hundred and seven hundred and fifty to five hundred. Their recommendation is that it should remain at fifteen hundred overall, the two seven hundred and fifties. That is, that is their recommendation. They believe that it's, the other changes that have been suggested, the five stories, the six square metre setback, the parking, et cetera, are all conditions that can be worked and will work, but that officers generally do not, in the advice they've given me, support that reduction in the commercial and food and drink outlets. So can I please have a bit more information through you, ma'am, as regards this? Because it's my belief that we can strike out that and have this as an amendment because the motion before us is to provide a preliminary approval subject to the conditions in attachment in eleven. And the changes that Councilor Boglari has proposed are those changes. And if we alter those changes, the motion as, as it is, is still subject to conditions outlined in attachment eleven.
Thank you, Councilor Tolty, back to you, Andrew.
I believe what I said before still stands. Ultimately, it's up to council. And we're trying to make it clearer that you know what you're deciding on. I've read section seven point four point two and it's really about making minor changes to the word and keeping the intent. Quite correct, issuing, still issuing a preliminary approval, you're striking out a part of that preliminary approval. From a process point of view, I believe it'd be easier if you vote on the motion before you. But it is up to council now. If you agree, it's consistent with seven point four point two, you can make that amendment on the floor now and vote on it and decide. The other option is, as I said before, if you don't agree with those motions proposed by Councilor Boglari, you vote that down and then you decide an unamended motion which excludes the GFA. The standing orders are trying to make it clearer as a process-
Okay, but it is within standing orders for the mayor to accept the proposed amendment and for us to vote on that to become the motion.
If councillor, councillor is prepared to accept it that way, you can make it that way. It's not a black and white answer here.
We've got a few, we've got a few questions actually. Councilor Gollay?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Boglari, obviously done a lot of work and consulted the community and everybody about this. I have a question for officers. We saw a presentation last week from a demographer who told us that eighty per cent of our residential housing stock in the city is standalone residential dwellings. The state average is seventy-five per cent, for standalone the rest of the state. Shaping SEQ twenty twenty-three plan is quite explicit in providing direction for more medium-density residential dwellings. And this, this proposal here with this application is certainly consistent with that. Would it be fair for me to say that we, we will need this commercial space at what was suggested by the officers because there will be increased density in our city and that, that area, which was part of the economic needs assessment already? I, I note as well in the officer's report that it says there are no vacant or available centre zone sites in the primary trade area that could accommodate the identified need.
Can I have an office, thank you very much.
If I may provide some clarification for, for councillors. So just to be clear, the officer's recommendation is as per the report that's before you in the agenda. So as, as part of that, our assessment of the development application, we obviously received, or sorry, we, we instructed a third party review of the economic needs assessment that was submitted in support of the development application. So, Councilor Boglari is quite right, I think I heard her mention that there was, there will be some impacts on the existing centres, the Horizon centres, the Wellington Point Village. But obviously in undertaking a needs assessment, it's obviously a methodology that's followed. There's trade areas, there's expenditure and then there's quantifiable kind of impacts or, or parameters to put around that. So whilst it is acknowledged that there are some impacts, it was recommended by the developers' economic needs assessment that they were within acceptable realms. Now, that has been confirmed by the independent review that we saw of that, of that needs assessment. So that is, that is our position. So I've heard some debate as well around obviously appeal rights and of course with any development application, there are standard appeal rights in terms of submitters or from, from, from applicants in terms of whether or not there's conditions they want to, they want to appeal. I don't know whether in this particular instance, the appellant or the applicant would appeal that, that's their decision. But ultimately, obviously, we would have to take a, take a view on whether, and, and see whether or not we could get support to defend any position that council should take. So all I can say is at the moment, obviously, based on the advice that we've received from our third-party economists who reviewed the report that was undertaken, that they are recommending that the impact is within an acceptable realm.
Follow up to that, are you suggesting that it may be hard for us, it may not be defend, defensible if we reduce the commercial space here, if the expert opinion and the reports we've seen, which have been validated by a third party independently, that they may be-
I'm not the economic expert in, in, so it's difficult for me to answer that question. But what I, what I would say to you is that council has sought third-party advice, who is a court expert, and they have provided their, us with their advice in relation to the economic needs report that was undertaken. So that position is that they have said that that's acceptable. Obviously, if, if those, if the amended resolution were to, to go through, if there were a, an appeal, we would obviously have to seek advice from an expert and we would be guided by that, through that process.
Point of order, Madam Chair, if I can?
Yes, Councilor Tolty.
My understanding is we've had a councillor put forward a proposal for an amendment, but we haven't voted on that.
I've been waiting for some further advice, I think we, we- Yeah, I think- Okay, so, I think, so the advice, as I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have to exhaust this motion?
We can do it either way, was the advice.
So, just bear with me one minute. All right, so the advice that I've, the advice that I've gotten for governance is that we should put this motion, allow Councilor Boglari to sum up and put this motion, and then if this isn't successful, then you can bring in your amendment. So, Councilor Boglari, would you like to sum up?
Before I sum up, I just want clarity. So we're now going to vote on the motion as it is.
Yes, your amended motion, yeah, your mo, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're voting on the motion as it stands.
Councilor Tolty?
On the point of order, Madam Chair, can I just clarify? The advice is based on the fact that the officers think this will be cleaner and tidier. It is not based on standing orders.
Sorry.
Perhaps I could get, what's, so what's the point of order?
Point of order is that we have a proposal to amend the motion and that should be put to council for voting on the amendment. Well, I haven't had an opportunity to ask for a seconder because, yeah.
If I may ask through the Chair, through the Chair, ma'am, that-
So we have to, we have to deal with one point of order at a time. So we'll have to, so the first point of order is that you're raising that the amendment wasn't dealt with?
Yes, thank you.
So if I can just get some advice on this and then we can ask for a seconder if this is where we're at?
So from a process point of view on a seven point four point two, one, you'll need a seconder. Two, Wendy as, sorry, Councilor Boglari as a proposal will also need to consent to it. So with the proposers' approval, may have some minor changes to the words to ensure its intent is better understood. So a process-
May, may the further point of order may clarify that, councillor?
We just, we just seek officers' advice, thank you.
So if the, this is the amendment of the motion, the motion is put by Councilor Boglari. The motion can be amended on Councilor Boglari's approval, provided it has some minor changes to the words to ensure that its intent is better understood without changing the meaning. And what we've said is that that is open to two things. One, Councilor Boglari agreed to change the GFA. And secondly, that most, that amendment be seconded and then voted on by council. What we have suggested is that amendment to motions is clearer if they're only minor in nature. So we're not saying you can't make the motion as, if it goes down, it still comes up.
Can I seek some clarity on that? My understanding of what we've always done in the past is that if there's a proposed amendment and the mover of that original motion approves those amendments, that becomes the live's emotion. But if someone, excuse me, Councilor Bishop- But if someone, excuse me councillor Bishop, but if someone proposes an amended motion and it becomes seconded, that then becomes the live motion, and there is no need for the mover of the original motion to approve those mine amendments. Thank you. So we just need a second of my amended motion to remove those conditions about the reduction in the commercial area.
And I believe councillor Rendles has already done that.
So can I, so I've heard the opinion of councillor Mackenzie and Talty, can I get some officer clarification? Because as I understood, the opinion was just differed from the advice that we got.
So there's two ways of doing it. So the original motion, the original amendment, not using those terms, but councillor Boglari's motion is the live motion at the moment. The cleanest way to do it is by voting on that motion there with councillor Mackenzie saying that she's got an amended motion if that goes down. Well, that's the way, that's the cleanest way. So now councillor Mackenzie has said she's got a proposed amendment to reduce, remove the reduction, that hasn't been seconded at this point, but if it is seconded, it becomes the live motion, and then you debate that first. Well, not formally, no, not formally.
All right. Okay, yeah, so maybe if we just get a, just to clarify, if I just get a quick small poll on, no? So is that what you said? Okay, so I can seek clarity, just so I know, on whether council wants to proceed the vote on the amendment now, or vote with the motion as it stands? Okay, all right. Okay, so you're...
I'm not prepared to accept the amendment, but if they want to vote on the amendment, that's fine.
Vote on the motion as it currently stands? Okay, all right. So we've got, we've got an alternate, we've got an alternate... We've got an amendment to the current motion sitting with councillor Mackenzie and seconded, as I understood, by councillor Rendles. So we're just going to hold?
Can I suggest that rather than saying that the reduction in the commercial area be removed from the motion?
If we can, it's councillor Mackenzie's...
Okay.
Councillor Mackenzie's motion, so if we can seek clarification?
That the reduction in the commercial area, um, commercial and food and drink area remain at the... Thank you. Yeah, there's no reduction.
Okay, just checking from a legal perspective that that's okay?
Planners are nodding yes.
It is that the condition on the...
Okay. We're just going to suspend the meeting for a few minutes while we seek clarification on this and make sure everything is done the right way.
I'll move that.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Mitchell.
We're suspending for five minutes.
Those in favour? Thank you, carried unanimously.
All right, good afternoon everyone, we are coming back into session. So first off, I will take, I move a motion that we are going to resume the meeting. Can I have a mover and a second there? Thank you councillor Mitchell, thank you councillor Colley, put the motion. Thank you, carried unanimously. Just before we stepped aside, I'm just going to clarify the vote to adjourn. So the councillor Boglari voted against adjourning the meeting, so just for the record, I'm clarifying. And we are now moving back to look at or to address the amended motion that was moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Rendles. Now, given the prosecution that we've given this motion, are you right to put this motion now, or would you like the vote...
You have to vote, you have to take a vote to accept this motion.
Well, we accept it, yeah, so I'll put to the vote that we accept the amendment. So we've got councillor Mitchell, councillor Golly, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley...
Colley.
Sorry, sorry, no, not councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop. Those against, councillor Boglari, councillor Hughes and myself. So now we have a live motion. You will, yeah, so councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm only going to briefly speak to it considering we have prosecuted this item, and the amendment is to reduce, to remove the reference of reducing the gross floor area of the retail commercial precinct, based on the information we've received. All the other conditions though, that councillor Boglari proposed, have remained the same. And publicly, I'd like to just thank councillor Boglari for her comprehensive overview and her oversight of this, of this application and the motion that she originally moved for us, so thank you.
So thank you very much councillor Mackenzie, any speakers against? Sorry councillor Boglari.
I'll speak against this motion. Everything that the proposal is, is actually against the planning scheme. And I do agree that we have to see if the community outcomes outweigh that deviation from the city plan, and I agree on three quarters of it that it does. You know, we're being told, we need density, we need diversity, we've got a housing crisis, I get all that. And I do believe that the developer is addressing what we're being told and pressured to by the state government and every planning act possible that we have to deliver. However, I cannot move past the impact on local businesses. And the traders, when I speak to them, are very concerned about the number of smaller shops that are going in there. Five hundred was more than sufficient to actually service this area, the surrounding area. And the increase in population was actually needed to actually boost up the local economy as it stands now. To reduce that small minimal, so that there would be more sharing of it, I thought was more than reasonable. I feel the developer has put forward a proposal and has actually, except for a lot of the environmental things, which again, I thank the officers for working out with me and the traffic, he's got a really good deal here. And I don't believe if, the compromise in my mind was just to reduce that commercial a little bit to limit that impact, because it's not based on an opinion, it's based on the facts of talking to the local people, the local traders. They know the area, and they're all very concerned about that input. And I would encourage councillors to consider those local family businesses. We can vote this one down and we can go back to the original unamended motion.
Thank you very much. If there are any questions, or I can throw back to councillor Mackenzie to sum up, or we can put the motion, if you want to go through again. So speaking for councillor Hewlett.
Thank you mayor, I fully understand councillor Boglari's reasoning, but after what the officers have said, if this gets through with the five hundred, the reduced floor area, the developer's just going to take us to court, I believe, and win it. We've already got expert advice that this floor area is acceptable. So I just don't, I don't want to be in the habit of just wasting councillors' money because you think something might be a little better if it's a bit smaller, so, and for that reason, I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you, we have prosecuted, but as a local councillor for the Horizon Shopping Centre, which is pretty much diagonally away, and sincerely listening to the debate and the conversation, I know that there's been shops in that shopping centre that have been empty for years, not weeks, years. And so I hear the passionate conversation of councillor Boglari in support of our local traders, and I also acknowledge the reports and the independent advice. But as a local councillor at Horizon, with those empty shops, I truly see and feel it. And from that point of view, I commend councillor Boglari and her opportunity to support our local residents and their businesses.
Thank you councillor Hughes, speakers for, councillor Mitchell.
Yes, I want to focus on the floor area, I want to focus on how this, if it gets up, approval is a step forward where, to a person, councillors have accepted that different styles of living, diversity of housing, different price points are important. And that's, our city struggled with change, and through the discussions today, I've noticed that people are going, yeah, actually, we need this variety, even some height, extra height that's been accepted, we need that. We don't need that to provide any super profits, which just don't exist in the building industry anymore, quite frankly. We need to provide homes for people, to provide services. One of the great things in this development is there is public recreational space that's funded by private industry, fantastic, that's a savings to ratepayers. I welcome the new people who will be coming into this area, I welcome the choice of housing they'll have. I think it's one far welcome that they're going to be spending more money in all the shops in the area and inviting their friends and family. I think it's a great testament, the fact that we've then, after the year of negotiation with officers and the applicant, that we've had the opportunity to work together today to modify the original amendment and accept around eighty percent of it and bring forward improved parking rates and other matters of importance that different councillors said. So I want to focus on those real positives, and overwhelmingly, this is a good news story for our area, one of great cooperation with applicants, with our officers, congratulations to them over the year and to all you councillors, and while the debate always gets a little bit messy at times, you know, in the eighty twenty rule, great result, okay, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Those against, and I will speak. I just wanted to, again, congratulate everyone, I think the debate's been really good and I've learned a lot about the process, it's been very, very interesting. I really like that everyone's pretty much in agreement that there is so much about this project that is a positive for community in relation to housing diversity, in relation to what it brings and how it's been dealt with, I think that's a wonderful perspective. I do really want to note though, the local councillors who are on the ground, speaking to businesses, that sometimes the nuances of those one-to-one discussions with businesses aren't captured in any other way. So I think it is important to acknowledge that, and I would actually like to acknowledge the credibility of those discussions, having those one-on-one discussions with, whether it's the farm and what's come before, with businesses in the, in Victoria Point Centre, with Horizon, vacancy rates, those stories mean a lot. So for that reason, that leads caution for me about the approval of just that aspect. There are so many positives though, so I just wanted to outline that it's that one aspect that I'm focusing on as well. Bearing in mind that this is a balance of the legalities and what that brings to council, acknowledging that that is an unknown, but yeah, wholly wonderful project, we seem to be in so much agreement, which I think is wonderful, I'm looking forward to what it brings, but I do note the concerns that both councillors in that areas have. So speaker for, councillor Golly.
No, it's all right, there you go. Thank you mayor. I want to really highlight the work that councillor Boglari has done on this. This is an immense piece of work, trying to get to the best possible outcomes. I agree with councillor Mitchell that it's probably more like a ninety-nine point nine percent rule here, we're talking about some floor space. I absolutely a hundred percent support you councillor Boglari and the work that you've done and the real positive outcomes that we've achieved today. So thank you for your work and thank you for your patience in working with us to actually, I know it's tough, the sting of giving up that one piece, but I think we've got a really good outcome based on your work. So you've done an amazing amount of work, and I think everyone here just wants to support you as best we can. So I know it's a sting in the tail, that last piece, but we got there and you've done amazing, well done.
Thank you, I don't need to sum up. All right, without further ado, I'd like to put the motion, those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Golly, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop, and those against, councillor Boglari, councillor Hughes and myself. Well done everyone, moving on to...
Can I just say thank you to everyone for that discussion, I appreciate the acceptance of all the other changes, I do appreciate that, thank you. And the officers once again.
All right, back on track, here we go, agenda item number fifteen point two, which is an update on the review of South East Queensland Koala Habitat regulations. Can I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Boglari, councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, that we're noting the update on the Queensland Government's review, so this is not our work, this is the state government's work and we're just noting what they're doing.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie, speakers aga... Any speaker against, we'll go for or against, no? Questions, councillor Boglari.
This is actually quite an important piece of work and it's been going on for a number of years, so I was just wondering if there is an actual officer here to give a brief overview of it, just for the public record, maybe they've gone to sleep. No, David, go David, thank you.
I was going to respond councillors, but we do have an expert here.
Let's manage expectations, okay. So yes, thank you councillor Boglari, and through the chair, yes, this is a process that has been going on for some time, so as the report notes, it was back in two thousand and sixteen, that there was a report initially presented to the Queensland Government that noted the decline in koala populations in what used to be called the Koala Coast. So in two thousand and twenty, the Queensland Government introduced its new regulatory framework to improve the protection of koala habitat. It's been an ongoing iterative process, there's a statutory map that's updated every year, they've commenced a formal review into the implementation of that regulatory framework, which was then released for public consultation last year, council provided a formal submission on that, and the Queensland Government has now publicly released its intention, how it intends to make further amendments to that regulatory framework to improve the protection of the koala. So does that answer your question?
Through the chair, I thought there was a little bit of question about some areas we wanted included and the state didn't.
That's right, so when the regulatory map was first introduced, there were large parts of the Redlands Coast that had previously been protected as koala habitat that were no longer going to be protected. Through that process, we successfully negotiated with the state to protect that as locally refined koala habitat. So council has been working with, or council officers have been working with the Queensland Government officers to go through a process to assess that locally refined koala habitat. That process has now been finalised, and the locally refined koala habitat for Redlands Coast will all be incorporated into core koala habitat in the next update of the regulatory mapping.
I'd just like to say thank you to the officers for that amount of work and that achievement that you did there, that was pretty awesome, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Councillor Mackenzie, would you like to sum up?
No, it's fine, thanks.
All right, I put the motion to accept the officer's recommendation, those in favour, thank you carried unanimously. Agenda item number sixteen, reports from... Reports from Infrastructure and Operations, sixteen point one, which is Green Evate Proprietary Limited, appointment of the independent director and board chairperson. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Talty, seconded by councillor Boglari, councillor Talty, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it's all in the report, madam chair, and as important it is, I think all of our brains are exhausted, so I think we'll just move on.
Thank you. Enormous, all right, so speakers against, no, all right, any other questions? Comment councillor Bishop?
Just a comment, I think that this is a collaboration across many council areas, and I think it's a significant achievement to appoint an independent director for the board of a, relating to the subregional waste... for the board of a, relating to the Sub Regional Waste Alliance. There's been a lot of work that's been happening and the collaboration. Waste is one of the biggest challenges that we face in the Western world, but certainly South East Queensland. And managing that in a way that's going to be as, to recycle as much as possible, I think is going to be a very important part of our future as a region. So I think it's good to have this appointment of the independent director. And I note all of the work that's gone into the recruitment. Thank you.
Thank you, it is indeed a very exciting project. Councillor Talty, would you like to sum up?
I think we can put the vote, thank you, mayor.
Excellent. All right, now put the vote to accept the officer's recommendation. Those in favour, thank you, carried unanimously. Moving to agenda item number 17, notice of intention to repeal or amend resolutions, I've not been advised of any. Agenda item number 18, notice of emotion. I have not been advised of any notices of emotion from councillors. I've not, agenda item number 19, urgent business. I'm not aware of any urgent business. Which takes us through to confidential items. So we're now moving into.
Any need to move into confidential?
No? Wonderful, all right. So in relation to item 20.1, do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Mitchell. I put the vote to accept the officer's recommendation. Those in favour? Thank you, that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, for your input today. Thank you very much to, thank you. Thank you very much to the officers for being here and providing guidance. Yep, they did. Councillors, I think everyone has signed off on the attendance sheet. Just a reminder if you have not. And I now declare the meeting closed at 14:29.